Twenty two of February twenty twenty four. Before we get started, Kate Sweeten said she would do the opening ceremony, of course.
Yes.
Thank you, Kate.
So. So much simple opening ceremonies because I don't think we can ever say the pledge too often. And I don't say the pledge. It's just a, just a great moment in my life every time it happens. Take me back to when I first became a citizen and what a privilege it is. Man call up daily because she thought we had the privilege of being here. And it's a really cool thing to go from saying the pledge as. From legal resident to the same with pledges. So with that, we'll let her go ahead. And one other thing that I'm gonna do, I happen to be someone in this room that's having a birthday today. And so we're gonna say happy birthday to Kate. All right, everyone get ready. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to Kate Sweeten. Happy birthday to you. Oh, yeah.
Tony, we called an audible on you. I hope that's okay.
Sure, that's great.
With that, council will follow this meeting to order and start the roll call with you, please, Kate.
Kate Sweeten.
Yeah, myself.
Eric Lynn.
David Lawson.
And Norman Larson.
Larry Jacobson, city staff. We have the way Robert City Planner, Justin Mon, City Manager, Cheryl Fodway, City Recorder. What?
I'm not the city manager.
Did I say Mon City Manager? Sorry. This is just the city manager. This is Cheryl Fodway. She's the city reporter. Back of the room is Chad Wright, Recreation Director. We have. Amy Johnson hiding behind a podium, treasurer for the city. And we welcome Claire Shane from Funding Commission Chair. And if I missed anyone, we'll call it that. Missed anyone? First, council, I have seen a consider approval of minutes from the first of February in our last meeting and the current agenda for tonight.
Motion to approve.
Okay, motions from dorm to approve. Second, from Kate, thank you very much. Discussion on that, please. So you got those in favor? Hi, sorry, had any of folks say no? No posts? Okay, we'll call that unanimous. Thank you very much. Next, we have a public comment for it. We have. Public hearing scheduled for tonight. So if you would like to speak to the agenda item on the public hearing. It might be better to offer those comments in the context of the public hearing. And the proposal specifically is ADU with the trailer part. If you have anything else that you would like to speak to the council about. Uh, now, now is a great opportunity for you to stand up and address the council. Tony, you have a question?
Yes, is there a new phone system that's been installed in the city offices?
Well, come up here, can you? This, it seems like a difficult question for us to answer.
Yeah, my question was, is there a new phone system installed in the public op, in the city offices?
Not that I know of. Are you having trouble reaching us?
Yes. Actually, they very good big snow phone. I tried calling the city office. And it had me select one to nine option. And I went through the whole nine, making nine different calls trying to get somebody at the city office. Was not able to get in touch with any of the nine options.
What's the time zone?
I would say between ten noon. Thank you. Yeah, we'll have to look into that. That's, that's definitely the source.
Did, did identify that it was never city. So I think I had the right number. Thank you, Tony. We'll, we'll follow up with staff. What way we? Maybe we have phone logs or uptime downtime on phone systems. That's not the way it's supposed to work. Thank you for bringing that to our attention. And so Lea, you have your name down. I'm not sure if you want to speak now or you want to say happy birthday again or what?
No, I just have the comments.
Come, come, please, to the podium. Just so, this is so people that are listening online, yes, can hear your comments as well.
I'm just trying to do. I don't know if you want me to speak now about the.
The ADU and trailer part?
Yes.
You could, although here's another opportunity when we get to that spot on the agenda.
Just do that.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, thanks. All right. Mr. Wade? Tell us who you are, where you live, please.
Yeah, my weight, I live in Nibley. It's about business subdivisions. You guys have heard of me before. Uh, first of all, I've been getting here for a couple minutes. Thank you for your response on the speeding. You know, at least we got a new speedo that sided up coming in from the east side down the hill. And we had, and gave put some different flashing lights, you know, that would monitor that. Uh, and they, they worked, they were great when they were working that. They were placing a place where a neighbor has a. Has works his business outside of his home and they park, track tracks and vehicles surrounded on both sides. They didn't only work for about half the time. So it sat there so nicely, didn't clash. There were pictures parked on both sides of, on both sides of the road and they didn't work all the time to collect data. But I appreciate the response and the effort. It was nice to see. Uh, we've had a little improvement, but it's still lots of hotlines on that road. It's long and smooth and. You know, nice curves and things like that. If there's something we can do, there'll be more permanent micrediff or maybe. Or if you like, try, let's write it down there. That would be wonderful. The other thing, you know, uh. I, I was, I talked to some of you, asked, uh, vintage over here there. The trees that we fight in the, in the partnerships, they still have the trunk wraps on them after two years. We might have to cut those off. I can't be helping those trees in a long, long time. Uh, over time. And we have several that were planted without people living in the house. It was, or being around the water, take care of them and they died. And we're wondering if there's an opportunity to replace those trees that died and then. Make the instructor of the neighbors how to take care of them. I was one that didn't want them at all in my, in my yard, but I had taken care of them, a lot of them and they do those things so that they survive. I prefer like them. To keep them alive with tree fertilizer because I built right up in the dead in my front yard, so. So I do try to take care of them, but I think there's some opportunity there. And that's all I have tonight, but you know, if there's something we get, some things that would be more current for the speed. When they take care of trees, uh, in the shelter, have things to run, cover the laps off of them. Uh, those sort of, that was probably there for transport. Keep the trucks from getting all the dirt from the transport even. I've cut mine off, but I does feel off around the neighborhood, but. You know, we probably have to move all by the, around the neighborhood, so.
Yeah, so our follow up will be with Roger.
Okay.
And, uh, first director, Gil, we'll, we'll talk something about that.
Okay.
Uh, speaking. What if you and I and Justin together, totally outside of this session and we, there's some. There's some mitigation strategy here for trial.
Okay. Have another time, another night?
Yeah, we, we won't necessarily discuss it right now. It's, it's, it's appropriate to bring to our attention on this agenda, but. How about if we go off line off?
Sure.
If you, Justin, if you make a note, we'll set up a meeting.
You want me to go in the ways? Well. Well, you're right.
And we, and maybe if I could address one, we did send a notice out to property owners. I mean, it's probably been quite a while, but. Um, you know, finding that they, they were in charge of taking care of the trees and. You know, that they were being planted and probably a few months after they were planted. I mean, it's been, it's been a while. But we did, we didn't know by everyone's that.
So, so the houses were still occupied. Right back very now we still. We've worked on that. So, okay. Thank you for coming. Thank you for your time, guys, since I know all the others outside. So kind of good with it.
Any other public comments not related to the public hearing on the agenda? Okay, uh, we'll, we'll. See you in a minute there. Uh, next, we have a planning mission report. Claire, are you doing that or anybody doing that? Claire, you want to, looks like they're going to be helping us. So this is, this is Claire Shane, our funding commission chair.
Hello, everyone. We met recently and went over the, um, rezoning. They ordered silver by eleven fifty west thirty two hundred south from R two to R two A. And that was approved, then rezoned R two A. And then we also went into the same problem doing a land swap. And we did, uh, it was approved that we do the land swap that they wanted one. Pretty sure if they came on and I guess the, the developers said they'd have an appraisal on the property. A third party appraisal. They don't have to share that with the small trucks that. The staff will actually make sure it's fair and equal. And that was approved by this year.
And this they clarified and I was, it was recommended for approval. And it was going to be on the agenda because when I thought the applicant, um. Proposed that, that it'd be on the next agenda available year tonight, so.
Okay, the, the next one is, uh, it's on your agenda today. Um, the rezoning over the north is over at, uh. One ten west twenty six hundred south, but in a, um, budget valor. Um, proceed to housing for, um, all transitions slash homeless vets over there. Um, we went through that and a lot of discussion. Keep public hearing about that and they will have more of that. There, it was, it was approved before the one law on that one. And so that will be reported in. And then we went over the goals for, um, uh, zoning. Right of this, so I don't know if I can remember.
Well, it, it is on you. That's on I can go, I can go. Okay, so, yeah, well.
There's a number of things and that was also approved by everybody that's doing premium. And it's not listed in priority. It's just listed. On there. And so, and that's kind of where city council is, uh, or planning and zoning. I got city council. Uh, but that's where planning and zoning ended up on there. So that's my report.
Thank you, Claire. Uh, questions for the council? We'll get to some of those things tonight. Okay. Okay, next, we have. A discussion and consideration for to accept the Nibley City audit for fiscal year twenty twenty two and twenty twenty three and. John Hatterby. Is he here?
Yeah.
Excellent. Will you, uh? Will you present the findings of your audit for this year?
Well, this is the most exciting time of the year for you. Thanks, Gil, for letting me take a few minutes. I'm John Hatterby. I'm a partner at Arthvin Motley. I'm over the government audits, um. And we should see audit for this year twenty twenty three. It's actually been done for a few months now, but I know that you guys canceled meetings in December when I was out of the country. Most of, most of January I've been working, so thanks for letting us come a little bit later in the year. Um, we're usually here a lot earlier. All right, so I'm just, I'm not going to go through a lot of financial stuff. I don't know that that's really my place to discuss the financial position. I guess I'll leave that up to Justin and his staff. Um, but I want to get on to ten, what our audit is, what scope is, what your opinions need in our audit. Um, and I think it makes a little bit more sense. That way, so I'm gonna start on the audit report. And the, and this audit report always proceeds the financial statements in every audit that's ever issued, um, and our opinion on. In this report is specific to your financial statements. So our opinion on the financial statements is an unmodified or unqualified opinion. That's a clean opinion, um. I don't understand why I'd be unqualified, unmodified, something of a capital stuff. What kind of works? So, um, unmodified means a clean opinion. Um, and then I'm just encouraging you to read through the audit report. There are certain sections that talk about what the responsibilities of the city are versus us as auditors. Um, there's just a couple of things that I'll point out from due to this year. Um, and that is, and then really it's a change in, in standard. Um, and this came about because of COVID. Uh, and that is that you and the city are, are required to throughout the year as financial reports are being issued. Um, look for, uh, conditions or events that are, have arisen or are rising. That if you continue as a feeling concern for at least the next twelve months. Really, um, it's, it's probably the extent of a certain event. Like I said, this came about because of COVID, um, luckily in the state of Utah. A lot of our governments weren't really hurt by COVID. We actually, uh, did very well. Uh, but that wasn't the case outside of the state of Utah. Uh, there were a lot of governments that struggled to have to get significant more federal money in order to keep operating. Um. The reason why this is now a requirement is nobody wanted to talk about the effects COVID was having either on governments or private businesses. Um, and so they would get your audit and financial statements. There's no discussions in the notes or anything about me. There's just pandemic. It's negatively affecting our business. We don't know if we're gonna survive. Uh, and then people rely on that information. To either give you credit, lend you money, rate your bonds, things like that. Um, and then all of a sudden businesses are folding up shop. Governments are struggling. They can't pay their bond payments. Um, and so now the standard changes that said, you know, you, you're required to at least look for things and then run an analysis internally. To make sure that you identify the issue and what you're gonna do to overcome that so you can continue to operate. Um, and as well as us as auditors, we now have to incorporate in our testing. We look for conditions or event lower than the test work that would also signify to us that there's something that's negatively impacting the city. And then we discuss that with you and make sure that you've done an analysis on that. All right. Next report we are required to issue is a report just saying that we perform your audit headquarters together in the auditing standards. Um, the whole intent of that report is, is looking at your internal controls, trying to identify any significant deficiencies or material weaknesses that are affecting the financial statements. Um, we did not identify any, uh, significant deficiencies or material weaknesses. That will affect the financial statements, so there's nothing to report on there, so I'll, I'll be brief on that one. Uh, the next report we, we are required to issue is for the state auditor. And that is your compliance with what they consider important, uh, state compliance matters. Um, and this opinion is very specific and limited to the areas that we already fire to test for the state auditor and that is your fiduciary compliance, your fund balance. Uh, compliance with government fees, restricted taxes, and the broad risk assessment. Uh, and I think I've talked to the council before, you know, my opinion on broad risk assessment, when you check your compliance, make sure that you do a high enough bound progress assessment, um. I know that, uh, there are a couple of entities that are ensuring cities based on what you put on your progress assessment, which. I absolutely go under it because, um. What you really should be using that progress assessment is to do a self assessment to look at the control that you have in place and see if there's places where you as a city can do better. Um, the progress assessment that you fill out at the state auditor, uh, is, is very generic and it's kind of a blanket approach where all of the governments in Utah, so all cities, counties, districts, everybody fills out the same form. And if we city is not the same as a city in along the west side of the country, you're not the same as Salt Lake City, nor are you the same as. The office in southern Utah with a hundred people. Uh, you have your own risks and that's your, your office, council, and management to identify the risks and, and make sure that they're controlled in place. In order to prevent anything from happening. Uh, you guys have done an amazing job. I know we've come up before and done internal controls or anything, uh, and I know that it's on forefront of Amy and Justin's mind, uh, so I. I commend the city for, for what you're doing as far as internal control. It's very hard as a small city to have enough control in place, uh, but you guys do a very good job. I'm not saying you're perfect and there's not very much improvement, but, um, you are doing a good job. Uh, so our opinion on your compliance is also an unmodified or unqualified opinion. So all areas we were. Required to test you bring compliance with those areas. Um, so that's kind of the scope of our management statements. That's what we're looking for. We're giving an opinion both on, both on the accuracy of your management statements. Um, as well as your compliance with both grant agreements as well as state compliance. Um, and then just a few things that I'm required to go over with you as a council. Um, and if you have problems with the audit, you've probably got copy of management letter. It is a separate document because it is directed toward you as a council and not to. Um, the general public, not that they can't read it, not that they, there's nothing, you know, confidential in the report, but it's our. Communication to you of how our audit, when, um. The first section just outlines our responsibilities as well as your responsibilities in relation to the audit. That's all they got in the engagement letter. That's why we have a sign of engagement letter. Um, compliant with that sort of requirement. So us a CBA is one of the most regulated industries, um, in America. And as such, especially with government auditing, um, we have independence requirements that we have to follow. Uh, not only me, myself and my team, but my entire firm has to be independent, independently, and if we are not, then we cannot be your auditors. Um. And it's, that's a little bit even more strict with governments that are certain control that we have to have in place. Uh, to document our independence, um, in our test work and that responsibility led with me as the partner to make sure that that's happening. Uh, we get peer reviewed, so we get audited, just like we come out and you guys, we get audited by other CBA to look at our audits and make sure that we're doing it correctly. Uh, but that responsibility really does apply to it with Justin. You know, he doesn't have to take the time to make sure that we're independent. That responsibility lies with me. Uh, significant risks that we identify during the audit. Um, so as part of our risk based audit, uh, that's how all of our audits are performed. Uh, we set a risk level on every area of your financial statement. So we start at the top and we, we go down. So we start cash and we go down through. All the statements and the notes and we assign this. So. Capital, if we're talking about capital assets, inherently it gets a lower risk because it's very hard to manipulate or misappropriate capital assets. It's. If, if somebody picks up this building and walks away, you know that building has been hit, right? It's, it's kind of hard to still build it or, or be hit with. Um. And it's very easy to determine historical cost that belongs on the financial statements. Uh, so typically it gets a lower risk. Versus cash, cash is easy to miss. Misappropriate and it's also easy to manipulate in the financial record. So it gets assigned a higher risk. What that means is we do additional testing over cash to come at the same comfort level, um, so we can give an opinion. And then overall, we have significant risks and these are either areas that are. Given to us out by outside parties or just based on the nature of you're a government entity, um, the size of complexity of your entity, things like that. So the three that were required now to disclose to you or to let you know that there's significant risks are. Improper revenue recognition, cash performance, and then management bias, financial statement estimates, and the ability of management override control. So all kind of. Just briefly go through them and let you know why they're significant advice. It's, it has nothing to do with Nibley City. Like I said, this is something that, that's always been around. We've always had this part of the audit, but now our standard say that we have to communicate and hear you. Uh, so the first one, improper revenue recognition, this has been around for. Oh, going on thirty years now. Harrison's head on and Arthur Anderson, if you're old enough to remember that. Uh, what Edon was doing was they were manipulating revenue, uh, and showing more revenue and that was to increase share more. Well, they were, they were, their stock was going up. Um, and then our grandsons, obviously the auditor didn't. Didn't catch it, didn't test it, whatever, and then how the heart fell. So our standard has changed that said every engagement that we perform, we have to recognize revenue recognition as a significant risk. So once again, it has nothing to do with Nibley City. This is our standard saying we have to recognize that as a significant risk. Uh, the second one is cash performance. You're, you're a government, you're a public entity, you're dealing with public funds. People are concerned with how you're spending money. Um, typically when you get grants, there's some relations on how you can spend that money. You're dealing with public funds, people are concerned with how you're spending money, um, typically when you get grants, there's some relations on how you can spend that money and think you can spend that money. Um, so cash performance uh, did become a significant risk. And the last one really has to do with internal controls, so management's bias, so you can build bias into your financial statements. Um, and the best example that I can give that gets clarity this is if there's litigation in the city. Uh, and a potential liability, you're required to disclose that as part of your financial statements. Now you have to be careful because you don't want to self-incriminate yourself in your own financial statements, um. But you also should not build bias into it to where if. There's a more than likely chance that you're going to have a potential liability, you can word it in a way. That makes the city appear innocent or there's going to be no liability, um, even though you know that there is going to be, so it's misleading when you hear the financial statements. Uh, financial statement estimates, there's estimates that are always built into the financial statements, uh, typically when your audit is performed sometimes. Uh, you don't know what revenues and expenditures that happen after the year need to be approved back into the prior years, a lot of times we'll estimate that. Both things like, you know, taxes, state tax commission, like sales tax, uh, vehicle tax, things like that. Because they're a couple of months behind, um, that that under government audits or government accounting standards, you you should recognize revenue and expenditures. Sixty days after the year end and pull them back into the previous year, um. Unless they specifically deal with the next year, um, as a discussion for another. Uh, night, but. If we estimate that, then that may or may not actually be the dollar value that comes in, and because it's an estimate, it potentially could change the financial statements. Uh, another good one is the U-High Retirement System, which you have no control over, um, but that anytime you have an actuary involved, you're believed to have estimates because they can operate the future, they've tried a little hard, but they. Cannot create the future, um. Uh, particularly in your enterprise funds, because it's going to show in your financial records. Uh, what your net pension asset or liability is, and then the department is both now a little bit related to pensions, and this is something that came about probably seven or eight years ago, um. Over the last couple of years, so if you go back two years ago, you had a significant net pension liability recorded on your financial statement, so. To outside users that are looking at that, they see this huge liability and they're like, what the heck is this liability? Fast forward a year and all of a sudden you have a net pension asset, so now that liability. Has moved from the liability section on the balance sheet up to. The asset section, and in order to get it up there, you have to either reduce your expenditures expenditures or you have to increase revenue. Um, so it's affecting the bottom line of your funds uh, in a positive manner. Fast forward another year and now all of a sudden it flips it flips back to a definition liability. And so now in order to get it back down to the liability, you have to show. That an increase in expenses or you have to decrease your revenue, which has a negative impact on your funds. So because that's an estimate, because that goes into the financial statement. We it it will change and make your your financial statements fluctuate year to year to where. It's really hard for you as a council to make future financial decisions based on. You know, data that's going up and down and you can't figure out why your your finances are going up and you're having these big swings, and so. Us and auditor, we look at your financial statements, A, we make sure that they're consistent over periods as much as possible, like I said, you are, so you you have no control over that, and either we we just get the information from the U-High Retirement System. Um, but any other estimates. We make sure that they're as consistent and reasonable as possible, so that you don't have those swings in financial data. And then the last one, management's ability to override control. Um, and the best example I can give is this one, uh, is journal entries. So in the financial statement system, every everything should be built on a single transaction, so we'll talk about utilities, if you assess a utility bill. You're going to have an increasing receivable and an increase increase in revenue, that's a transaction in the financial statement system. And then you're going to send out a bill and then the 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 citizen is going to commit and they're going to pay their utility bill, and then you're going to increase cash and then you're going to decrease the account receivable. So these transactions are what build up the whole of your financial system or what you look at in the audits. Now, if there's a mistake that gets made during the year or at the close of the periods. There is certain things that maybe need to be adjusted in the financial statements system, whether it's depreciation, whether it's. Going one thing to from one account to another account. So those are not transactions, you have to do that through a journal entry. So Justin has the ability to create a journal entry, or Dave has the ability to create a journal entry in the system. Well, with also with journal entries, you can also manipulate the financial state statement system to fraudulently present numbers. It's an inherent limitation of internal control, you cannot get away from that, so you have to have the ability to create a journal entry. But you can also, there's a risk of this over here, so what. All of these significant risks mean are we we find specific tests directed right at these risks. To make sure that there's no mis statements in the financial statements being caused by these risks. For example, journal entries, we test all of the journal entries, we look at every journal entry that's made in your financial statement system during the year, and we make sure that. A, we understand what it's doing, B, it's doing what it's supposed to be doing, that it's improved and that it's reasonable and accurate, so, um. Really just the significant risks being that we are doing additional testing in our audit work to make sure that there's not mistakes in your financial statements. All right, everything else in the letter, I think it is pretty self-explanatory, there were any disagreements in the audit, everything went well. Uh, I had great reports from my staff, they love working with with Justin and Amy and Dave, um. So no complaints on our end, and everything went very, very smooth. Uh, as far as findings this year, uh, there weren't any internal control findings and there were no state compliance findings, so another year with no findings, which is good, um. Once again, not saying that you're perfect, uh. We do have conversations, you know, throughout the year or when we're here on field work on, you know, how to best practices and and what you guys could do to make sure that everything that you are doing is. Appropriate and above the line and you're sharing of your controls. Um, and and Justin and Amy are very involved in that and they they kind of spurred on a lot of those conversations, so I really, really appreciate that. There any questions? I'm happy to answer any questions, David, David's on the other one.
One more question for Justin. This wasn't in any of the package information, right, so I seem a little lost because I haven't read anything about it.
So I really apologize, Nate asked me the same question for me and we did, we failed what the audit actual audit report in the fans meeting box, so we sincerely apologize. We're we're happy to uh, continue this and bring it, let you guys chew on it over the next three weeks and. And uh, accepted at that time, sincerely apologize, just stated.
Did we, I actually never received that audit report, did you receive the audit report?
If I did, it's very annoying to us.
Okay. Maybe we.
Yeah. We just asked if there was any follow-up or any issues, they said no, we just kind of forgot about it, to be honest, and uh, just then come up and we we set the agenda and we had everything going, but we just failed and we've been putting it in the box, so.
Okay.
Sincere apologies.
All right, yeah.
I don't think that's a significant risk, so.
Well, if as you do, if there are questions. Please feel free to reach out to me, I love to talk our lines and I'm I'm I love having conversations, so I want you guys to feel comfortable, understand what's going on and 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 understand what's in the audit, because ultimately it's your audit, so.
No, it's ours, it's ours. We'll get to it.
Select the training before we begin, I feel like another one.
Other other questions for? Um, like, um. Let me ask this, if the council decides to continue this till our next meeting. Do we need John here for that or maybe available remotely or?
I can be available remotely, you know, I don't need to be here.
You can just ask the question before.
Beforehand, absolutely.
And then after we we continue the question, yeah. So you do want to motion for first reading or you just wanted this, um?
Yeah, actually, wouldn't have to continue, just adopt the first reading.
It's only first reading. Don't show the agenda.
Uh, yeah. Questions continue, the motion twenty four oh two. Okay, questions to continue, uh. About the other second problem, okay, discussions. Thanks, John, Greg, appreciate you for letting me know, those in paper are continuing, deciding until our next meeting, we say bye. Any opposed?
Yeah, thanks, John.
Next up, we got Revolution twenty four oh two, this is uh. Appointing NIBLY City's representative to the Board of Trustees for the Cash and Skeet Oabeyment District. Uh, so I'm asking the council to give consent to appoint Gregory Shannon to fill the remainder of Tom Davis's term, Tom has moved from NIBLY. And so there's really only one year left, I'm hoping that you'll love this job, Gregory so much, you'll you'll stay for another twelve years. We'll take that up when the panel comes. Uh, Greg and I have chatted about this and he's willing and able to serve in this capacity. And so, uh, Gregory's here, you recognize Gregory from the. Uh, his service on the cash value transit. Uh, CVTD board, excellent, thank you for that, and when we combine. Uh, cities to reduce the size of that board, Gregory came to me and said, gee, what what can I do next, so. Thank you for that service and thank you for your willingness to uh, to continue in this capacity. Does the council have questions for Gregory?
I I'm going to want to specific for Gregory.
Want to, Mr. Shannon, maybe you'll come to the podium.
I don't know, what can you tell me this, what what is involved?
Oh, I used to be on, but I don't know if Mr. Shannon answers.
That's a. An interesting way to be slung against the wall like ever. I haven't attended the meeting yet, but our mosquito abatement. Uh, for this area, the area in which we live, um, is represented by people from the district. Okay, so all of us that are in the city have a person on that board that works with it. And they discuss discuss such things as. Uh, is it appropriate to spray in this city or not by the capture rates, they do a lot of studying. During the active months. For adult order by and for uh, the babies, whatever that is called.
I think that's the larva, I think the insecticide or the insect stages, the mosquitoes, the virus.
But from what I can see is we're not very much involved with that, uh. They they go around, they check all aspects, uh, all over our valley. They check it out and then they come back with proposals to spray and they are even whether they're going to spray, how they're going to spray, what they're going to spray, so.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, like, the citizens of NIBLY along with. Roughly ten. Maybe it's fifteen other municipalities. Uh, voted to adopt. A self-imposed corporate tax for a special service district called the Cash Mosquito Abatement District. And with any taxing authority. Uh, we have to have oversight, in fact, that's in a large part of what this council does, we don't run the city. But we provide oversight to professional staff that runs the city. So mosquito abatement district is similar, the main driver on the. Staff side of things is a guy named Richard Rigby. Who is responsible for keeping up with employment practices, best management practices for pesticides, when's the right time to spray, what's the right time to spray or or kind of spray to use. And so he he is staff and runs the program. But the uh, executive board adopts a budget, make sure that. Um, the proper financial constraints are in place, not even all that kind of stuff. Um, and provide advice to Richard on. What they think he should be looking at on best management practices as well. That was it for enter. It's kind of, it's it's one meeting a month, um. It's an open and public meeting, so uh, because it represents spending tax money. Just like our meetings and uh. It's a, it's an interesting crowd, it's a mix of. Uh, elected officials plus canal company type folks and certainly has a strong representation from. Agricultural landlords. Thank you. Other questions, comments?
I am very sorry for the setting guide. Came here. Five years ago now. Maybe six, I think it is six. And the first thing I did as I came as the mayor, I just, I retired from forty five year, forty four years in business and that's why I serve.
And you're still doing it, thank you. Now, one of the things that Gregory and I talked about is. You're not going to be on the board and shut down the mosquito abatement district, and maybe you don't want to, but. The voters approved that tax, the voters approved that special service district, it'll take a vote at a constituency to get rid of it. And I don't think any of us want to get rid of it, it's uh, it's an, it's a, you know. West Nile virus is always a threat and they monitor that and they give all those things. I'd pick motion if it's appropriate. Uh, okay, please.
Make a motion to approve Revolution twenty four dash two.
And is this to wait a second reading?
Uh, yes.
Okay, so this would be it, uh, motion to approve. Twenty four oh two, is there a second here, thank you. More discussion, questions? Okay, Sheriff, call the Rollstons.
Another question, what are your?
In favor.
Loud person, what is your vote?
Yes.
House member man, in favor, council member man south, vote for him up.
In favor.
House member seat, what is your vote, yes, thank you.
Thank you, council, thank you for everything that passed.
Thank you all.
I have the papers on post.
Thank you.
Uh, we'll we'll have you back and have you give us a. Report on how it's going.
Give me time to learn.
Absolutely. Maybe next meeting. You're missing, you're missing this meeting, you're missing their meeting right now.
Why?
Let us know if we can help you, Gregory, okay, we'll do it, thanks, appreciate that. Okay, next we'll move to a public hearing, this is on ordinance twenty four dash oh three, this is a development agreement with. RMW Enterprises, um. To to associate with project valor to allow construction of a modular house at Turner Park. At twenty six hundred south. Um, before we kick off the public hearing, Levi, will you give us some background information, please?
Right, um, so what's what's being proposed by the applicant is to use. A vacant area within um, the mobile home park, uh, that. You know, was briefly slated for for stor- uh, for storage, but you know, there's space there. Uh, for for this use is is to build, um. A casino, a compound casino, not, it's really, you know. Similar to what we consider accessory dwelling unit, but accessory dwelling, you know, by definition is accessory to a single tenant home, so it's. Similar to, you know, what what we're talking about later on in the agenda as far as the scale of it, um, it's a small, small housing unit, possible is a. Is a manufacturer that unit, so that's that's why, you know, reference is possible, but there's there, you know, small modular housing units. Um, that would be used to house veterans, you know, one one at a time, one one veteran and and their household. Um, the reason this is in front of you tonight is because the mobile home park is a non-conforming use. And the city's code does not allow expansion of the use or addition of dwellings. And that's that's the, that's specifically related, the other section that's related to non-conforming uses, um. So if if this type of unit were proposed in, let's say, a a scene behind a single family home. It'll be allowed, there there'd be no need for this kind of development in our agreement for it, but um. There, you know, there's a few different avenues for the applicant to have this this considered, um, one one would be to. Uh, you know, amend the ordinance, the the. One, one would be to, you know, amend the ordinance, the 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 non-conform use ordinance. Well, that adds another, that has a lot of other implications. And so what what they propose to do was was this development agreement, which allows them to move forward, you know, despite its despite it not agreeing with this provision of the ordinance and 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 the city council can approve this as and, you know, the council has approved such agreements that that are in conflict with the city code, as long as you go through the same process as if you're changing the code. So it's almost as if you're you're adopting an ordinance, but just for this location and and in the form of a development agreement. So this this development agreement would allow the construction of one casino and includes a number of certain terms and conditions that are, you know, very specific to the site. So this is this is what just some images the applicant provided, the the type of of housing we're talking about. This is this is a one of the possible units. I believe that the one thing proposed here is slightly, it can be slightly larger than this, but but that's, you know, they're modular units that that are placed on the site but then built, you know, permanent foundation. This is just an image of the mobile home park and casino on the bottom right hand side, so southeast corner. That's a proposed area, the that the casino will be built if if this were approved. This is a site plan that shows how how it's proposed to be situated on the site. So both have this, you know, concrete parking area and then the possible unit there. There, you know, it it and and within the development agreement, it does, it does specify setback limitations of the minimum of eighteen feet from the nearest mobile home and then ten, a minimum of ten feet from the the property line, which is consistent with, you know, the ADU ordinance and, you know, in crafting this development agreement, it was staff's recommendation to be consistent with that ordinance, just as as some basis for for that. The applicant asked provided justification, you know, in this request, they and the applicant is here tonight, you know, to expand on any of this, if if you want to, you know, hear more from him. But then there are community resources for veterans to find housing. The goal of this program overall of project Valor is to end homelessness in Utah. And and the applicant pointed out that it's for the property owner and and local businesses and individuals to clean and improve landscape of the site. Just a summary of the terms and conditions, it allows for one modular casino unit that is no more than seven hundred and sixty square feet, built designated storage area within mobile home park according to the proposed site plan. I I should note that there was an error in the square footage when this was presented at planning commission and and it was posted in the packet, it's been, it's since been updated and it's it's in teams. It said seven hundred and twenty-two square feet before, but that was actually in conflict with the site plan with thirty-eight like many feet. So that was just, that was just an error. So seven hundred and sixty is what is in the draft agreement currently, but just just wanted to point that out. That's that was being proposed tonight. Casino must be used for housing of a United States military veteran. It must be setback ten feet from the property line, eighteen feet from other housing units. I already kind of mentioned about this, that's consistent with ADU setback standard. But casino must be all building and fire code and will require building permit submission, the submission of which must occur within one year. And and they must provide at least one parking space. Just a little bit on, you know, where this is, this is, while this is in in conflict with Nibley City Code, I think it's important to to go back to the guidance from our from our general plan and have the overarching goals and see, you know, how how this might meet those meet or not or not meet those goals. But, you know, a couple of goals within there, potential housing goal three is to continue to meet state federal moderate income housing requirements, which will allow Nibley to provide suitable housing choices for a variety of individuals. And, you know, this this proposal does does broaden the the number of housing choices in the community by one unit, but that it, you know, it isn't supportive of that goal. And strategy seven, the moderate income housing plan emphasizes partnering with entities that apply that apply programs or services that promote the construction or preservation of moderate income housing. This is intended to be for veterans that are that are transitioning from homelessness. So it it would, it would help provide housing for, you know, low to moderate income households and, you know, specifically veterans. These are the recommended findings and these that, you know, this this language is in the the draft proposed ordinance that's in front of the council tonight. So in accordance with with this provision, state code, a development agreement may include provisions which are in conflict with adopted ordinance is provided, the agreement is adopted with the same process of changing the ordinance. Two, the allowing for the casino is intended is in support of new city chairman plan or residential development and having goal three, a moderate income housing plan strategy seven. Three, the casino is expected to have minimal impact on surrounding properties and can be compatible with surrounding land uses or setback in size limitations of the proposed casino are within constraints of Nibley City's standards for accessory dwelling units. And so the planning commission recommended approval of of this development agreement. They did with with the added recommendation that the property, that there's a provision within the agreement that the property owner receives no net profit from the lease of land that you see there. And then in addition to that, and this and this was raised during the discussion with planning commission, but they they didn't recommend anything specific, but staff is is recommending another provision in the in the development agreement that wasn't originally proposed with planning commission. There requires the landowner to produce a water efficiency improvement plan prior to specific occupancy, just in staff's view that there has been, and Justin could speak to this in more detail, but but it there 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 has been, you know, it seems like there's been a lot of water leaking from the water system and it's and and some improvements that could be made there, that they have, they have made some significant improvements. And staff, staff would like, you know, just work with property owner when we're talking about adding an additional housing unit to ensure that, you know, that this, the water system is is more, you know, it's upgraded so that so that it can be more water efficient. They're they're using much more water than what is expected for the number of units that are in there. And, you know, we we think that's indicative of, you know, the water system leaking. So and that's something that that could be addressed. We don't know exactly what, you know, needs to happen there. That's why we're proposing this water efficiency improvement plan to do that. I I should also mention, I have had a discussion with representative of BRAG on brand opportunities that we could potentially partner with them to to improve or even reflect the water system, you know, where it doesn't, where it does impact low income individuals. That's not specific to this agreement, but I I just thought I would mention that as I know, this is something the city would would work with the applicant on to try to improve the system. And then both of these provisions, the, you know, this water efficiency improvement and this this provision that the property owner wouldn't receive net net profit, lease lease of land, both of those provisions are within the draft agreement. So that that's it. Well, somebody wants to go, but.
Thank you, Levi. I just add one thing, when when you say we could improve the water system with a community development block grant, that's actually money available through BRAG CBPD that is would would be paid by federal money. That's not an individual city expense to upgrade that water system. That's an application process that has to do with median income for the people that are affected, so on and so forth. So that's not part of this agreement, but it's certainly something that we've been pursuing with the CBPD program in BRAG. And our topic, I'm on the BRAG board and so I'd be happy to take that proposal. I mean, we have to go through the proposal process, but I gave you a vote once, at least on that board. Your power, hold the floor, your family, it's on you. Thank you. Yeah. Questions for Levi or should we leave it to the public hearing? Okay, let's move into public hearing. We did, planning commission did vote public hearing on this two weeks ago. And in fact, that satisfies the state requirement for public hearing on this matter. I am very happy to see you here tonight and if you're here to address this topic, even if it's not required, I I thought it a good idea for the council to get a chance to hear how you feel about this project. We won't have a time limit tonight, as long as it seems to me that you are moving forward with points that you're trying, that you're that you're trying to make or and are making, will let you know. I ask that you be polite, of course, and generous in your comments. I walk the line on this a little bit. A lot of times people come to public hearings and they just have questions, asking for information. And we will try to answer those questions in a public hearing, but we will wait for a policy debate with the council until the next agenda arrives. Now, that doesn't mean you can't state your opinion on making policy here. Please do that, that's what the public hearing is about. But we won't debate back and forth on the decision. We will try to answer questions and and then stop short with, you know, stop at the exchange of information instead of the exchange of ideas on policy. So any questions on how we're going to propose this public hearing? Excellent. With without objection from the council, I'll open the public hearing. Same now, please come and tell us how you feel about this.
Well, honestly, when I first came here today, or when I read the proposal, I was very excited about it because I picture just in a trailer full of guys running them up. But that's a different tonight. So I appreciate what Levi has represented tonight to help me understand that it's not that. And that it's usually transitioning or homeless, that and families. Did I understand that correctly?
Yes, just one, yes.
Okay. Just one family. So I appreciate that. I'm still not quite clear on where the position is. I'm not very clear reading maps, but I.
Did you call that map wrong?
Yeah. I took a walk the other day, but some people were saying it was on eighty west of the end and then some people were saying it was one ten. So we looked at one ten and there was a place behind the last trailer, but I don't know that would be where it is again, you know, the pens were the church, next to the church. And so.
Do you see the yellow?
Yes, so it's not like eighty, is it?
It's eighty eighty west, you know.
Okay, so it is like eighty west instead of one ten. Okay, because that's what we were looking at and on your notes it said one ten. So you might want to check that out because people figure out, they thought it was maybe in the corner there, AM, and people figure out how you put anything there. So yeah, that answered my question and thank you for doing a good job for helping people. My husband was a veteran and so.
He still lives a veteran.
He still lives all the time. He has a little thing on his on his basket. So anyway, so thank you for doing that and thank you for being such a to all the haters around there, doing a good job. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. You're very kind. And Angelica, Michael Fortune, who is the proponent, will have a chance to address more about what this entire program consists of, the limitations, the the what it's intended to do, the veterans, veterans administration involvement. Would you like, Michael, to, I'm going to call that a request for information, and would you like, Michael, to address some of that now?
That would be, that would be good. So then when these people have transitioned, then we have other, other family will be in, right? That's what we.
I think Michael will answer that.
He'll answer that.
Councilor, you okay with that information in the public hearing? Yeah, okay.
Awesome. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Yeah. Michael, it's you too. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity to be here and I appreciate the support and encouragement that we perceive in the city of Nibley. I think that's great. It's a great thing and I just can't say enough about it. To answer your question, from the time we began this process of moving along, we really were focused and have expanded a little bit in the sense that what we're doing is looking for, we're looking for homeless vets that need help. When we find those homeless vets, there's a specific criteria to what help we'll give them. Number one is if they are physically, mentally ill or afflicted, then we need to get them to the VA hospital. If they are mentally struggling and having problems, then we need to get them to the VA hospital and also prepare for any treatment, things of that nature, and see what we can do to help them. This is if we find someone, someone out on the street, living in their car, things of that nature. The next situation we have, which I think is what will be the focus the most, comes from an individual family, an individual person, a couple, even even one or two that we have children. Whether it be a single mom with a child or a single father with a child, things like that. If it's more than the capacity set by the state as to how many people can be in this unit, then then they're not eligible for it. There's strict criteria in almost every area from the VA requirements for receiving help with the vouchers to BRAGs, housing authority requirements to meet and participate in those programs, and then also through the landowner in this case, where he is providing that environment and he will have background check and and also requirements that must be, and rules that must be followed. So typically, if we find someone that's struggling, maybe they're they're either staying with friends, couch surfing, they're sleeping in their car, they're in a tent up in the canyon, they they're working, trying to work, trying to do those things, trying to save, they've had some struggles. Those are good candidates for us and they'll they'll go through a rigor, very rigorous process of getting verified, approved and ready to move forward. The next is what's called transition, where maybe they are leaving, coming out of the service, maybe they've had some issues health-wise, things like that. And they haven't been homeless, they're not homeless now. They just maybe struggling to add to the to the state of where they're going to go next. Are they going to be able to get in a car that they can afford? Are they going to live with famine? What would that situation be? And if, to eliminate the stress and difficulty, if they are eligible, then they they should participate in these units. The third is aging veterans. We have veterans that are aging, that are on, some have military pensions, some have just social security, things of that nature. And for like for a lot of people, they can be priced out of being able to afford a place to rent and things like that. So they too could be eligible for participating in this. The difference is it's not meant to be a lifetime home. The quality of the home is, we we refer to it as generational because of the high quality of this construction and so forth. But what it is meant to do is take that individual, help them. Help them get, get out of where they're at, out from under all that stress, get into a place. Where they know they're gonna be there tonight, tomorrow, or maybe from now on, months from now. As long as they are progressing with their caseworker and other requirements that may be set for them. Um, as long as they are progressing, they'll be okay. They've got a place. They're not in jeopardy of losing it. That has been the biggest problem for the past several years with helping veterans. The limited amount of time. I don't wanna take too much longer, but I just wanna specify that it really has evolved to three types of individuals. And it is helping get back on their feet, helping to get back into the work, uh, the work field and environment. It's also to help them get opportunities for. Education or skills training and certification, because I guarantee you. They will eventually realize that they're doing good, they're doing great, they're back functioning again. And they will move out and probably get their own place, a bigger place, things like that. And then we will go in and we will rehab the, the facility. Um, just get ready for another family that will come along. That's, that's kind of the process.
Thank you.
Thanks for that information. And then, I don't want that to derail the public comment at all. Thank you, Michael. That's, that's very good information. And, um. Who else would like to speak to the council on this matter? Tony?
Can we open the questions, uh?
You can ask and then this, yeah, we, we won't, we won't do a policy debate, but we can ask for information. So why, why, Tony, come on up. Michael, can you be ready?
I apologize that I had to leave. My name's Anthony Gardner. I live in twenty seventeen South Main. In Nibley. Um, the question I have was, uh, is there any other places in Cashville? Do you actually remember this and how long they've operated?
Hey, yeah, I need to, Mike, why don't you stand? But, Mike, and if we have online, sure you can, our kids' phones, please. Um, this isn't.
This, this program has been in the development and getting the support and everything required for probably just over a year. Um, it started off as I participated in. The point in time counts and identifying the veterans and seeing the problem that we had. This is the first of its kind. But it is statistically the best. Solution to solving and helping these veterans. This will be the first one. Um, I like to say that we chose Nibley to be the kickoff place for this. And, um, part of that is because here was this piece of property. That was a storage unit. And years back, it was full of broken down cars, junk and all that. You can see it from the road. It was an eyesore, so I think the city of Nibley had to clean it all out. So here was a place that could work just perfect for what we were looking to do. And the landlord. Um, with all the service that he's done in his life with his family. He agreed to help and let us be able to use that and. Uh, with that and then with the support and so forth. Um. Next, we'll, we will look to see, as we look to see where the need is, wherever the need is, that's where we're gonna go. And we look to go throughout the state. Where we may have thirty to thirty-five of these units for a quad of two or three. Uh, maybe in some cases as many as five, if the need is that great. Be based on population and so forth. Um, so this is it. This is the first one.
So you mentioned that some of those eligible people, uh, might be, uh, people who are retired or.
Yes.
On pension.
Yes.
So what incentive are they gonna have to give them, uh, since this is just, I understand, is a transition? Now. If you're able to live on the pension in this, what's, what are you, how, how are we gonna get that and what we need to, to go out of that?
For some of those, thank you. That's a great question. This really came about from the Veterans Administration. Asking us to expand a little and include that aspect of aging veteran. That's the largest number of individuals right now. Um, as they are coming into, to that, that age. And what, what will happen there is that's where we're looking at the pods, what we call Project Pod, which could have three to five. Of these casita type units there, and those would be more long-term. Um, for those aging veterans, if they have that place to stay, they'll stay until. Health reasons or whatever may take them out and put them into a hospital or care facility. So yes, we look to, to, to provide that. The, the single type unit, um, will be. For the benefit of those, get back on their feet. Let's, let's give that help a handout and let's, let's get you going again.
So what about those who have been in the service and are dishonorably discharged? Will they be eligible?
That's another great question. Um, in working with the VA. There are, there are some individuals, the majority of individuals have received an honorable discharge. But there are some that have not. And. There are some that were enlisted, that finished their enlistment term and had a honorable discharge. But then maybe signed up again and then maybe there were some issues and they have that. That is a decision that is made through the Veterans Affairs Administration. We have a, um, I think it's a VSO, I, I have to look, but it's, um. The, the VA has a representative that works here in the valley with Bragg. And they go through that process and they determine are they eligible for it. So.
Notice they don't, if you, don't go away till you're done. If you have other questions or important numbers, all my questions, please, if you have a policy. Recommendation for us, we welcome you to share that. I don't want, I. Counsel, I'm allowing a little bit more back and forth. I kind of feel like I'm right on the line here. Because I don't want to limit the public opportunity. To, to, to speak their opinion on this. So. Um. Anyone else who would like to come forward, please do. Come on up.
Um. My name is Dawn Hornach, and I, uh, currently live in Logan. However, um. Michael Fortune happens to be my brother. And I hold him in very high regard. Um. He is a person who looks. At what the needs may be. And how. Can that be facilitated? How, what are the solutions that can be created to solve issues like this? I have always held in my heart the fact that, um, there are groups of people. Who qualify for. Several different areas of health, financially, housing, medical, whatever. But there, and then there are those who are self-sufficient, you know, they, they have their home, they have a job. They're, they're grounded in their environment. But there is that small section in between where you don't quite have what you need. But you can also have too much. To get over here. And sometimes. That is the most stressful place to be, is that you just can't. Get it all together. You need help. You need some kind of help. It's not a long-term kind of help. It's not, um, you know, just because. There's no out there and I wanna be, have a part of it. It's not that. It's just that sometimes. Things happen in our life that create this, um, insecurity. Um, I am. The wife of a military veteran. Um. We survive on his pension. Which isn't very much, and because of life issues that have happened. It has been considerably reduced. Because of decisions that my husband has made. Um. So therefore. I'm not destitute, but I'm also. Not completely independent. Okay, there are times when I just need help. And it gets very frustrating when. You can't seem to get past that. Um, and you take it, you take it one day at a time. And. I don't want my family to have to live in a car. I don't want my family to have to. Ran into a, a two-bedroom apartment and I've got children that need space. I, I want to be able to reach out and ask for that help, be it temporary. Be it transitional. Be it, you know, just, just right now, just, you know, maybe this month, next month, whatever. And I have felt that way for a very long time. I see people and friends who live in their cars who need help. But it's just not available to them. And I think our veterans. Need to know how much they, we appreciate what they have given. What they have lost. Um. What they have given up. And I think this is a great way to show that, yes, we see you need this help. You have your pensions, you have your VA benefits, you have your, uh, free medical care, which is no longer free medical care. Um. You have all of these things, but it's not quite where you need to be to be considered. Independent. Okay, and I think this is a great way. For them to be able to get to that point. It's transitional, it's like, I'm gonna be able to get my feet on, on the ground, I'm gonna be able to. She can provide for my family, um, make the adjustments that we need to make. And then look at it as stepping stone, so that we can move forward. And that's what I see this project do. And I love my brother. Uh, he's put so much. Passion and heartfeltness into this program. And. I would just like to see them succeed, you know, to help people who are just on the edge and need that little extra. Boy, the little extra step, that they can have in their lives, that they get better.
Thank you.
So thank you.
Other comments, please. Wait, you already spoke.
I think that what this sweet lady was saying is. That veterans need a hand up. That's much a hand out.
Yep.
Thank that. Thank you. Thank you. Other comments, we welcome all.
Hello, I'm Travis. I'm a Cashville resident. Not really newly resident, I've only been here for about five years. Living in R B that whole time. Um, that was all in the case, though. I have been out of the service since twenty seventeen. And I lived in my car for five years after that. Um. And then, uh, this may be just an opinionated thing to say, but if I had had an opportunity like this, I think I could have done a lot better for myself. Um. I've been out of work. I've been homeless. I have done. No, I haven't done anything drunk or anything crazy like that, but there are definitely people that are worse off than I have been and. Due to a career I've been in, I've been kind of sleeping in my car, fighting your straight California, competing, and. When I moved out here, I had a lot more opportunities as a Bragg and I appreciated them for it. Uh, people in the church, uh, especially in one of them, she's amazing, so they're helping. But if I had had opportunities like this, I'd be better in the long term than what I am now. Um. I may live in an RV, but it's not, it's just a temporary residence. And I, I hope that. Whatever the city decides, I hope that they can be right by that. I think there are many, many of them in all of them. I've seen it firsthand, saw the city. Being the first city that it was in the west side, we have lots of people that are part of this law plan. Thank you.
So can you give us? Who's next? Going once. Once. Thank you for your comments. Uh, appreciating your interacting with council on this matter and we'll close the public hearing. Thank you. Next, we'll move to consideration of, uh, this topic. This is ordinance twenty-four dash zero three, and this is where the council gets to discuss policy. It would be good, I think, for our conversation if we know whether you are looking at. Uh, waiting in second reading or you'd like to have this serve as a first reading and take this up again at our next meeting for second read. And you could let me know, uh, in a formal motion, whatever you're ready.
Tony, make a motion to approve on the twenty-four oh three for our first reading?
Make a motion to approve for first reading, say, from me, right? Let's discuss that motion. So this is, that a first reading is when we. Ask questions, that's additional questions come over here for, uh, time during the public hearing to make sure we understand what's involved. And then, uh, get into more of that, any living policy decision, um, segment. Discussion on the motion, please.
Um, and they, so it's seven hundred sixty square feet.
That's right.
So it was a two-bedroom, one-bedroom?
One bedroom.
And then one bath, like the top.
It will be a two, one bedroom, two bath. The, the, you'll come in the entryway, there's a kitchen. Uh, fully compliant, so everything is all in. Um, uh, the dining area will be right there. And then you have a living room here, yeah, and a bathroom, and then you have a master bedroom, closet, and another full bath, then there is. We did this for two reasons. We, we originally, and our idea is look at one unit, it's a twenty by twenty base. And then what we looked at is we said. Um, what if we have a veteran that's in a wheelchair? But we need that, we, we, we want to make sure it's ADA compliant and those things. So we requested and said, we want to put these, the, the two building blocks together here that gives that, we can have either doorways, things like that, we need to. And so whether it's needed or not. Um, so for one person, it may be over two. For a couple, it would probably be just right. Um, for, we, we, it, right now, in the, in the network for Bragg's housing authority, there's an individual veteran with three children. A single father with three children. Um, this will be too small for them. But so they're looking at getting them into somewhere else. But, uh, we had an individual. Um. Um, gentleman in his mid to late sixties veteran with some serious health problems. He's still mobile. But that's rapidly decreasing. So we knew we'd have a wheelchair situation. And, but it's quickly, and because we're not there yet. Um, we needed to put him into the care, so we. Not to, for him, at least he has independence there for the whole of us, the medical care. The other thing about this is. Um, and it hasn't been mentioned, it was talked a little bit about. If I may have a little, to just speak, written in, is that okay? Okay, okay. Um, that. When you think of homelessness, all you have to do is turn on the news and look at what they show out on the street in the tents and all those kind of things. Are there veterans in there? Yes, there's probably some. But, um, like I said before, the place for them is, is not this step. It's some, it's something else. Most of them, people that have addiction. Uh, alcohol, that's some mental, serious mental health issues, things of that nature. And there are resources and places for them to go get taken, to get that, that part of. The next is the ones that, um, have struggled since they got out of service. And, um. And that's the ones that we really, we really see fitting into this time, this category. And, um. Um. And then when we do the pods, we can then deal with the aging and so forth, so. And, um, uh, and then when we do the products, we can then deal with the aging and so forth, so. There's a, there's a lot of reverts back. The other side I wanted to express was, um. More stringent than just a normal rent. Um, because when you've got the VA to qualify for, you've got the. Brag to qualify for, you have the property owner to qualify for. But you also have wraparound care that Project Valor has received and guaranteed by the Veterans Administration. That they will probably provide case worker management and wraparound care. There also is a, is, um, a veteran specific. Uh, individual at BRAG that will work closely with that veteran. So he'll probably be checked on and checked in with more than anybody in any BRAG or rent situation. Um, the other aspect of it is, if it is someone that has, is a wheelchair confined or with some health issues. Um, the VA has local physicians up here that. Visit and meet with them on a regular basis for their continuing care. We had to have that partnership with the VA so that, uh, everything goes to them. So, so anyway, that, that's, I hope I might have answered a few questions. Comments, council discussion, if you're upstairs.
I have a few questions. About the development agreement between the city and, and between maybe an RW.
Yeah, so it's, it's between the property owner and, and project man, Project Valor, which is five oh one through C, C three.
So there is a requirement that the property owner needs to put in a creative plan. To update the pipes, the water systems, correct?
Correct.
Now, does that plan just have to be submitted? Does it have to have a longer timeline, like when? If that is not, when does that plan have to be completed?
It would have to be completed before a certificate of occupancy, remember, remember that is, so. They can pull a bill, they can pull a billing permit while there. Um, I guess while it's in process, but. According to the development agreement, they have to deliver it to the city before they get certificate of occupancy.
Okay.
So before the unit completely off the present.
Um, and just to clarify the, the pipe, are these private roads in the trade park? So they're about eight four five, aren't valid, and on the earth and landowner.
Correct, yeah.
There is the potential for the CDVG plant, that's a potential, but it's not a issue.
Which the landlord is.
Well, I think you. I think you would have to partner with the city, but it doesn't. We, we have to work for the details, but.
But it'd be looking to spell out the developer before we sign this.
I don't think so. Um, at this stage, we're, we're just recommending that there's a plan to move forward. It could be, it could be, the grant opportunity, I think, could be one avenue to address. The issues, but maybe it's not, maybe, maybe that's not the appropriate. You know, approach. I think, I think at this stage in the process, we've still. It's something that should be looked at and, and provided to the city to, just to give assurance that they're moving forward with improvements.
If I could interject something too, if that's all right. Um, we've already not reached out to Brian and Paul, who's over that program and everything else. And they just, uh, we have a meeting scheduled with him. Because we have a family who would like to get into the unit. Uh, as soon as everything is done, that's, that's asked of us. And so we meet with him, um, on the twenty eighth to review and start to develop a plan. And with that, we'll have identified steps that we can be, can be taken. And with some preliminary deliverables, and that's going to be inside that. So we're gonna move quickly and get things done. With my background, um, twenty plus years in manufactured housing. Our management, ownership, things of that nature, dealer, community sites. I think one of the steps that was taken by the landowners was an issue with the homeowners. A lot of these older homes, older manufactured homes. They either have leaking faucets, running toilets, a leak under the house, things of that nature. And they went and made some adjustments and no, no occasion to, it was talking about in planning, to the tenants and so forth. And they started to check and address that, and I think there was a substantial decrease in that water usage. And I, I almost will, I also worked, was the contractor for the USU University Mobile Home Park. But we closed it down over a pretty finite period. They had a massive water leaks, but those were under rent. Um, their, their water bill was tremendous, and you're talking a hundred thousand dollars a month. And, um, that's what was resolved, and that's why it explodes down. But we experienced those things, we saw, we knew what was going on there. And I, I really think what you'll see is the layout of the plan. It gets identified, certain testing that can take place that will really make a difference for improving that. For those families and individuals, and for the, the warriors who cheer in the city, the, the, of the park. And then there's also the option, which, uh, I know landowners are exploring. Where, and we've done this in other parks, where each home is privately metered. With a tracking unit in a sense, so that they can get a report, maybe that says, unit number such and such. Has water running, that's been running all night, it's probably a toilet handle that's stuck, or a faucet that's showing up that needs to be replaced. I mean, it's that, that isn't, uh, specific if I can do. So I know that they are looking at those options to do that, but I think it was substantial improvements. Go ahead, just.
So we stopped, I wanted, wanted to put more teeth in and make it, uh, tighter. We just decided that, you know, given the projects that it's already been made, and willing partner with what's going on with. Though the, the teeth is necessarily needed. And it also includes the fact that we depend the bill, like the, the, our, the meter is metering the water and the payment. So it's to their advantage to reduce the water bill by fixing these leaks, these things going on so far. And so we just want to work together with them and offer suggestions, offer help what we can, try to, try to improve it, but ultimately, they're paying the bill. If that makes sense.
Right, they are paying the bill, but part of, I think, part of the reason of this provision is for affordability, uh, you know. Of, of the units, and we're talking about the municipal housing. And if, if the water rates are through the roof, then it's, it's difficult to maintain affordability there, so.
Does that all make sense? One private water line, one meter. The landowner pays the bill, and has always paid the bill. However, it's probably not running, uh, charitable water company, okay? Most likely passes those costs on to residents. But there's, there's no one who's got an out, the, the landlord is not having outstanding bills. Even if he's using water or not using water, vision, but he's paid the.
Uh, the last question was just in regards to parking, uh, do these other trailers in the park just have one parking space each? Or so, I mean, is one parking spot going to be enough for a family, so I'm wondering, this for example? The space is not large, it looks like integral, is there space for what's the apartment pad right outside the unit? So I'm just wondering if that's a conversation you can have in planning? But if one parking space is enough?
Yeah, you know, the parking didn't come up so much, you know, specifically in planning dimension. But I think due to the size of the unit. Um, one station should be sufficient. I know for internal accessory planning, there's not necessarily this, um, restriction for detached. But for internal accessory planning, the state doesn't allow, um. Uh, required, requiring more than one space. Um, and, you know, where, where this, where this unit is. So small, I, we didn't think, I think one station should be sufficient.
Okay. Also, just to interject, um, I believe that our drawn, I believe that there's, there will be room enough, there are two vehicles. I think the majority of people that will be in there will be a sealed individual, there may be a couple.
But you mentioned you have a lot of people visiting, maybe for assistance.
It's at the end of the road, so I, if I could, I think what you'll have is. Just like through the day, as people can visit or scare, they need to park out on the street. Most of the drives in these older parks are linear, about a twenty by twenty or bigger. So we, we should be able to get our two in here, and then at the, the street, they would park, and it shouldn't be any inconvenience. For any of the neighbors or blocking anybody, their situation, you have that sketch on the block. Oh, it doesn't show the whole lot, it does, you can't get a sense of scale from that, right?
Yeah, I think additional property that goes off the, yeah, I think I could, right?
Yeah, that's all.
Thank you.
Since not the utility, this is a sewer system, I've had problems with that for a certain amount of time. We haven't had any issues that I've worn. I, I can't imagine it would make much of a difference.
But let me say this, I, I'm, as an engineer, I'm a fan of separating variables, right? Um. Tonight, we're talking about allowing an AB. In a trailer park that would be allowed in any residential lot in Niblet, except this trailer park. So this boxable and this veterans program, Project Valor. Could go in my backyard or my neighbor's backyard or any one of your backyard, because that's what our ordinance allows. The only reason we're going through this process and giving this additional consideration is, as Levi pointed out. We have eliminated trailer parks as a permitted use in Niblet. And so to add this unit to a non-permitted use goes against the rule of. Doing a more intensive land use on something that is only legally not informing or grandfathered in. So again, my, my, my point is that. This proposal could go into any one of our backyards or any one of our neighbors' backyards. And we would not be having this discussion, just to put it all in context. Does that make sense to you?
Thanks.
Sorry, can I, can I add, if I address a question, it'll probably be public hearing, I'm gonna address. Um, so the whole property is, is one address, one ten west. Uh, twenty six hundred south, that's, that's why that was sent out. I know that there's private lanes, but it doesn't give eighty west and one ten. But, um, but the property itself, its address is one ten west, twenty six hundred south. So I just thought, well, that shouldn't be, should be eighty. Eighty west. Right, but the, so that, that address is, uh, the address is assigned to this property. And there's only one property for all of those, all, all of the mobile home units in, in mobile homes.
So who establishes that address?
Uh, well, it's the city, uh, the city directs that to the county. And the, and the county reporter, officer reports that, so that's, that's the address.
The whole part would be to change that address. The reason why I'm asking that is if something does happen and we. Uh, have an incident, uh, whether the place caught, it's a fire. Or there's a fire or something, and we need to call somebody. If, uh, the sheriff or the police department is responding. And it isn't familiar with the area, they're gonna go a street further to one ten instead of coming down eighty west. Let's, 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 if you don't have an answer on the top of your head, we can take that up at second read, between now and second read. About emergency service response, not so much related to this ADU, but related to the entire trailer park.
Right.
That fair?
Yes.
Yeah.
I just, I just have a couple of questions, trying to understand everything, you know. Be practical, I mean, so this is the storage part from the mobile home unit, and they go on underneath storage.
Uh, the landlords here, Rod, you wanna?
Yeah.
Well, give us the genesis of this unused lot, you, hopefully, you, you own this. Trailer park line, to tell us the history, right?
Yes, it's vacant.
And nobody stores anything on it.
That would be cleaned up, maybe we did require us to do that, but we just did it. But there's nothing on the lot right now, except dirt, thousands of dirt.
Okay. Thank you, Rod, go ahead.
Mark? Uh, Joe Biden, the property today, I know this fence is a six foot, I'm changing fence with hardware.
To keep you out.
Well, I'm sure it is. But is that gonna be changed? Does it mean it kind of feels like it'd be bellingham?
Can you see the, yeah, I, I think I know where this fence is, it's all the same line.
They say, my, can I answer your question, you see the fences, they have the outside, we can stay, because that's the property outside. That the other room should be taken out. And so which ones stay around, around the edge? The yellow line, the yellow line, they keep the, the fence, and then between the, the circle and the other home, that would be the new fence. Yeah, I'm gonna stand in the water where I'm, I just, I would go away and I would. If I'm gonna be building inside a prison, I'd enter. Cause I don't even want to be for their answer, I feel like we should treat it better than that. So, and like there, I mean, a lot of them should have followed the rules, and that's fine. I'm just trying to understand everything. The other thing is, uh, is this location serviceable for any, you know. The veterans may mass transit, may need their access to that. Does this location meet those needs? I mean, I'm just wanting to, and meets everything we needed to meet to help the tenured veterans. Cause I do care about that, but.
Thank you. Um, thank you, that's a great question. I believe there is a bus stop just. Right outside the park, right, I would be watching eighty nine. And if there's light, yeah, there's a lot of light.
You know, you still see the water, it's crossing, and nobody, I mean, that, so. Uh, okay, it's dangerous for me.
Well, the other, the other thing is that you, that, uh, to be accurate, Cash Valley Transit Service. Also allows an A and, depending on the health and wellbeing, if they have, they can call Ryan and something like that.
Okay.
And our goal is, is that, yes, they may need to take the bus at first, but if we get them back in their feet and they're working. Then they, they wouldn't likely will take the steps just like any person would, uh, starts to make progress that way. This how it would be if anything happens, and some will already have that.
And, and you've already answered my other questions, but, you know, is it, is this gonna sit vacant, and is there gonna be potential for. Issues or vandalism or, you know, but it sounds like, that, that would be vacant.
I don't see us having a swimming door operation that every, every so, you know, every month, somebody who's coming in. I really think with the right people, you're, you're, I think at a minimum, you're six to nine months. To, to, to and a half year, or something like that. Um, I think that's what we're looking at, to be honest with you.
Well, I think I heard on the program, we, we just want to make sure we're on the boxes.
Okay.
So I just want to clarify what I think I heard, uh, with regards to the program, while the veteran is living in the home. They are responsible for caring for it? Or is that something that the organization is looking to think? It'd be to clarify that if they transition and another person comes in, that you can go in and make certain that it's ready for the next person, but. I, I might be reading them to that, but I have this, as far as caring for the property, you know, lots of lawn or something.
That's a great question. We maintain the, the maintenance on the home, and we maintain the maintenance on the lot. Number one, we're making a commitment to the city of Niblet. We're going to have that as one of the best looking places in the city of Niblet. With Project Valor, we will have the maintenance people that will take care of the yard maintenance and things like that. Uh, and any upkeep and so forth that may be needed on the unit. Um, we're certified for the maintenance and all the work, uh, that if anything is needed with the box. So, and in regards to the question about the fire, there is something in that part. Everyone should head over to the boxables because they're fireproof and waterproof.
Because they're fireproof, waterproof, mold proof. Food, but approved, be the safest place in the.
Definitely all fit. First time they're served.
And that way.
Okay, go ahead.
My second question, um. This comes from. Something that Gaby said earlier on, a household letter from another resident, I'm assuming, uh, rest of council. Has received, um. Gaby mentioned earlier on that she learned a lot during the presentation and she came here with some. Questions, maybe some unexpected, or, you know, she imagined something very different. And I received that from other people, um. The people that live in Mobile Home Park right now, they're not the property owners, they're not how they've been notified or if they have been notified. But I would just recommend, should this pass and then forward, taking the time to meet with them and explain what is happening. Would do a lot for that small little community feeling safe. And supportive of what is happening. And I, I just kind of caught that, but I know a number of people that live in the Mobile Home Park. And the number of people calling me asking questions indicates that maybe they're hearing secondhand or not hearing very much about this at all.
Right. I think that's a great question and I think we would be, we would be more than happy. Um, our objective has been is to move, move, move our approval process along. And then once that is, uh, is obtained. We immediately can get our building permit in, we will probably, uh. With the landowner's permission, um. Do a little get together outside where people can come up, ask us questions, do whatever, present to them, we'll have some. Renditions done, you know, we're going to put some trees along the, the fence area, the things like that. It'll, it'll, it will be a very nice looking, because probably it's our first one, we want it to be the best looking. So that as we move forward and so forth, but yes. That, that is the maintenance of it, the maintenance of the building, everything, it's, uh, Project Valor's responsibility.
Thank you, Nick. Nathan, what do you have for us?
The woman's up. Um, I just need some help understanding in the development agreement, we have, uh, term section. There it is, uh. Section one, which is finance regulations. And, um. The B paragraph. Um, I dropped out of school, so I just need help understanding what that one is saying. And, and why, why we felt that we need to be in there as a, the city, so if you need the time to get there, but.
You have, you have extra council members if you can help me clarify. It, it's kind of about giving precedence to this agreement, I'll work this out, et cetera.
Yeah, we, we find it. It's all. Loaded up here. And, and I should mention that this agreement was, so the, the, um. The request came from the. The applicant and they, you know, they paid their fees. Uh, the agreement was originally drafted by the city attorney and then, and then they, you, you know, that there were, there were a few requests of changes from the applicant. But most of this language had come from the city attorney. Um. We felt like it made more sense have the city attorney draft it than. Have them draft it and then we would rewrite the whole thing there, so. Um, so it's that next section of the terms, okay, the terms, one. Set the term condition, you know, development plan expressly modified or in direct conflict with this only. Wherever city adopted in standard or land use regulations, but the development agreement shall control and take precedence, but only if intended by express modification or direct conflict. So this is just saying, if, if there's something initially city code that is in conflict with this agreement, this agreement. Um. Takes precedence. There's, and, and I mentioned, you know, the, it being a non-conforming use. That's the, that's the one, you know, we're definitely aware of. Um. If there's anything else. Uh. And, and this agreement is specific to that, for example, let's say we find somewhere in our code that, that says. Oh, well, the setbacks need to be thirty feet. Well, we said ten feet, so it's ten feet. You know.
Yeah, I guess I would just, uh, if I could get clarification before the next reading on that, but only to the extent of express modification or direct conflict.
Uh, that's. And the way, the way that I understand that and, and we can, you know. We talked to the city attorneys for a little bit, but, um. The. My understanding is only if that is spelled out, so if there, if there's otherwise, everything else within our city code applies. So if, if it's in the agreement and it's in conflict, the agreement has precedence. If, if it's not mentioned. Then it still needs to meet, meet the city code, so it's, it's really just setting the, the boundaries of the agreement. Um, in relation to our, to our city charter.
Okay, thank you. Um, next question is just about this line, um. Development plan. I assume that that is what, um, we. Basically like we had ended. Is this the development plan that included those last couple of pages?
Uh, I'll let me pull that up. Um. There's a floor plan, right, yes, there, there, that is, that is the site plan and I showed that, but there is a floor, a floor. And I'll go a bit more detailed, but it'll also be. We'll just bring up the wood attachments, that'll, that's also part of the development.
Yeah, yeah, so that, that's, that's answering my question. So the word that I just asked you, have us double check? Because this is the plan we're asking them to do is. Um. And then you can answer now, the, the signage that is proposed that faces the highway. If that forms our. Sign and other type of. Restrictions, and so, I guess that's already looked into that, right, but if not, so double check on that, can you do that? I like the idea of the sign and promoting it, but I also don't want to. Lot. I don't want to make a tear down after.
Yeah, and, yeah, maybe your point is. There's no reason, and it goes to your first question, there's no reason to not follow our order, but order was set on the signage.
Yeah, or we're not, if we're going to say, this guy's not expecting sign, but it's in the agreement.
That's a good catch, uh, I don't, I don't think that was specifically reviewed, so. We'll do that.
Okay, those are the questions I had. Thank you. And maybe that's, is there a. Like a break if this work out? If they're going out and putting back to a different model? Is there like, there's something that don't work out the way we consider the, could you comment?
Um. Probably it's not an issue, but. You know, I mean, it, it just spelled out that it has to be for. A veteran, so for some reason that doesn't work out, then yeah, technically they would have to come back in and propose something else. If, I mean, if that was everything to talk about, if the program didn't look at it or something like that. Um, we go, so. We can, we can look at that in more detail. I.
So there's a no waiver clause. That says this is the agreement and no amendment, waiver modification. Uh, shall, shall be enacted without, uh. Another agreement that, that we would be involved in.
Well, basically, if it doesn't work out the way that the agreement spells, they have to come back and propose some amendments. And then we have to be reviews.
The agreement will be enforced by any means applicable to the party subject to notice of default, confusion set forth in section fifteen. You, uh, you have property rights in management office and a qualified mediator if there's a dispute. It's kind of like, well, it's kind of like zoning law dispute.
Yeah, I mean, there is one on enforcement and governing law, so that.
Right, that's what I mean, yeah, the district board.
I have one. Will we use the city, because CETA is not defined in our code. Correct. And they were calling me that just because it's technically not an ADU, because it's. It's a non-conforming law, right? Do we use the city to say, do we use this as an ADU and treat it as such? Or. So for example, the other thing I need to remember tonight is, does the owner have to? On the same property, so. I, I just, some clarification on. We're going to do everything based upon this agreement. But there are some things that maybe. Are wrapped into the, how are we going to view it moving forward, right? Because even, even the idea of us doing the. Then providing documentation of the status of who's living in there. Feels unique and weird, we wouldn't do that to any other ADUs. Other than if you're not the owner of the property, it's the person living in there, yeah.
Yeah, um. The way I see it is this, this is, this is, this is a unique case, it's not. With the accessory dwelling unit ordinance really doesn't apply. The, I mean, I, I mentioned that we tried to be consistent with the citing the setbacks, just, just so that, you know, there was some basis there. Because that, you know, the city. At one day, you know, when the city adopted that, felt that, okay, that was appropriate for the scale and everything. But other than that, I mean, really, there's that. It's just what's, what's specific to this agreement.
And it shows like every other dwelling on that lot essentially. And how they're treated.
Right.
And based on conformer, which I all of them are.
Yeah, right, okay. Just in.
Yeah. Yeah, it may, it's a good question, yeah. To me, it seems like the definition of CETA is what all plans says that is. Right?
Well, yeah.
I like that. Wait, yeah, and then, you know, I need to make a change on the parcel of the year, on the development.
Yeah, yeah. Yep, that's a good catch, well. I didn't, I made it on the track change version, but not on the PDF, so the PDF will, I'll do update the PDF. There's a couple of other changes as well to even fill in the PDF, that square footage and, or change the PDF or anything like that. That would have been.
Well, council. I'll take silence to me that are ready to vote on first reading on this. If you're not ready to vote, let me know. See, no objections, we'll go ahead with voice vote to. Uh. Move this to second reading, anybody who made notes on a couple of things to, to clear up. And Justin, thank you very much, so we'll make sure those are taken care of for second reading. Uh, those in favor of approving for first reading in advance of the second, please say like that.
On ahead.
Are there any opposeds? Okay, go ahead, so. Thanks for the discussion, thank you for coming out, uh, for all this, we have lots more fun in store. If you're interested, uh, you're welcome to come to. Stick around, come to any city council meeting. At five minutes. Uh, we'll take a short recess for about five minutes and get ready to go start.
Eric, can I just say that, uh. I didn't pay my sister to say those.
Much appreciation to the Parks and Recreation Committee. We appreciate you being here. You're gonna find out that we're sort of flying by the seat of our pants on this one. And that's why we're here. By the way, Chad, you got a form, and so who would you like to lead from your Parks and Recreation?
Maybe they should ask the Parks and Recreation, my dad, I think.
I would probably say notice through the, you know, so I don't want to be very.
Share a point of order.
She's gonna told him, so. Uh, I'm gonna, I'm gonna try to leave this off and do the best I can and ask Justin and Chad to help fill in all the cracks that I leave. Uh, we all know that there's a pent up demand for indoor rec space in Nibley City. And, uh, as it turns out, that pent up demand is coming by, and that comes to no surprise to any of us, I'm sure. Nibley City has made specific plans to deal with that man, demand, uh, starting with a request for proposals, uh, for outside consultants to provide us with a feasibility study. The main feasibility study is something that recognizes that there are constraints to a project. And so it sets about to identify those constraints and tells us how we can mitigate workaround and, and either eliminate or, uh, eliminate or live with those constraints. So one of the things that in the feasibility study is trying to do is help us understand what Nibley City can't afford. And our secondary objective is to help us understand at what scale we should be trying to do indoor rec space. That scale could range all the way from Nibley City going alone, putting a a bond referendum in front of our citizens and saying, uh, the feasibility would tell us this is what we can build with the resources and constraints that are available to us. All the way up to, uh, more greater scale, which would be, I'm gonna say all of cash counting. And this feasibility study is part of its secondary goal is to understand at what scale we should try to move forward on this. Uh, it's focused on Nibley. And I can tell you now from a political point of view, it's highly unlikely that we will talk cash counting into being part of the county recreation program. I say that because I've heard this story and thinking system every time from the county executive bringing up to the county council, what if we put a committee together at the county level to investigate a county scale indoor rec space? And the county council as a group said, yeah, we're not doing that. So that doesn't eliminate the possibility of scaling this project with other communities. In fact, here we are moving along. I think you have a timeline in here, right, Chad?
Yes.
Uh, along, I think that's the next slide, actually. Uh, we don't have to go through all these dates, but we're, we're, we're two thirds of the way through Chad's and company selection committee. Are two thirds of the way through, uh, choosing a firm to do the feasibility study for it. Okay, Tuesday, we were invited, uh, Chad, myself and Justin were invited to a meeting that is the Logan City equivalent of Parks and Rec. And they say, we want rec space. And the relationship between Logan City and Logan School District is going away. Uh, mid summer of 2025, there's still some very limited use by Logan City at the Logan Rec Center, but their citizens are saying, hey, what, what can we do to provide rec space in Logan? And maybe there's people outside of Logan that like to do these kinds of things too. So we went to that meeting and we explained where we work, Nibley City was in terms of this far away, we're pushing the play button on a feasibility study to understand what we can build and at what scale.
Let's go to the next slide.
There we go.
Yeah, that is in some way.
Okay. Do I have to read that?
No.
You read it and tell me if I say anything wrong. So those are the folks of all. And there is, there was a real desire expressed by recreation people that were on, you know, the, the Red Committee, plus some elected officials to say, we should band together and we should scale this to a, let's not call it a county rec center, but maybe to a valley or regional, and we don't have to define what regional means. But there was a strong request for Nibley City to pump brakes on what we're doing. And that's because, as I understand it, there, the other cities are saying, look, you guys are ahead of us, but we can do a lot more together than what you guys can do by ourselves. And maybe it's the next slide.
The Raps Tax?
Yeah. Right, thanks. So, uh, a specific proposal was uh, put out during that meeting that says, hey, let's make a, as a, as a group of communities, let's, let's apply for a Raps Tax uh, funding grant to pay for feasibility on a valley wide or regional wide scale. Um, I know that we shouldn't be cutting to solutions immediately, but one of the four darn conclusions in this whole discussion to put maybe your minds at ease is one indoor rec center that's north of Center Street in Logan is not acceptable in Nibley City. So specifically a strong proponent of us working together, I don't mind telling you, oh, is, is north Logan. And I, I, I think we have a, we're like twins sisters of one of north and one of the south of Logan. We kind of feel squeezed a little bit more globalness, doesn't it, by Logan? And so we want to make sure that, uh, we're trying to do something. I mean, they're, they're trying to make sure, we're trying to make sure we're doing something equitable for uh, communities to the north of Logan and communities to the south of Logan. It's equivalent to the school district deciding, cash county school district deciding that even though we may have only needed one high school at a time, we need to build two high schools. So we're even talking about this in a regional basis with the understanding that it's not gonna add to recreation space in North Logan without having recreation space also added to something in the south of the valley. Okay. So anyway, the Raps Tax applications are due within the week, March first, March first at 5:00 PM. Um, Dirk Anderson is the Cash County Assistant Executive. Is working on that along with Lindsay Peterson, Mayor of North Logan. We provided the backbone for what I think will be that grant application with our own RFP. You know, that we put out, the chat put out for the RFP that people responded to, the new RFPs goal to study. And there's some question even at this point, because it was a proposal that was kind of thought up in the middle of the meeting as to whether Raps Tax can be applied to uh, the feasibility study or some kind of study leading up to actual development of capital projects or ongoing maintenance and operations of existing projects. Because so, so that's really on them to figure that out. We don't need to, at this point, decide whether we endorse that feasibility study. The, the group could go to the Raps Tax, uh, committee with. But between Justin and Chad and I, after we spoke after the meeting, we realized we need help from Parks and Rec Advisory Committee and City Council to decide whether we, which one is like, uh, which of the options we prefer at this point. So we thought of three. And that is Nibley City says, we're doing our thing. We've started down this path. We've submitted $50,000 of budget to the feasibility study. Oh, by the way, eight companies responded to that RFP. They ranged from 65,000 to 320,000.
It was on 300,000. That's why the part was that.
And so to, to tip our hand a little bit, uh, the council at some point may have to decide that we have to spend more than the current budget of 50,000 to do our own feasibility study. All right, so that's option one. And, and I just want to get the options out there and we can go back and discuss pros and cons, maybe after we understand and give you a chance to add more options. Option one is we go our own. We try to figure out how to incorporate other communities in, but it's a secondary objective and most likely, I mean, I suspect it's incorporating the communities in the south part of the valley as opposed, and the RFP wasn't written to go survey North Logan residents to find out the pay law. Okay. And so option two is sort of on the opposite end of the scale, and that is we stop our own process and we wait for the regional scale option to develop for them. Again, the Raps Tax application for feasibility study, if that gets funded, you know, put together a special service district, decide which communities are in, which communities are out, put together bylaws and, you know, do this on a regional scale. Option three is to continue with, I'm not sure. I reviewed this too. I'm not sure the question is, but it's in between option one and two. It says, we're going to continue to do our thing. And be willing to possibly put some of the money that we're putting into a feasibility study at risk if a regional scale plan develops. So we won't wait around. We'll go with our thing and I will do my best to convince Lindsay Peterson in North Logan that, yeah, we're with you, but we're just not going to sit around and wait. We're gonna move on with this. And I will say that, uh, Nibley City is pushing the rest of the communities to do something here. Right? I, I don't think it's a race to the moon. I don't think it's a, an arms race or anything else. It's just that it's like, hey, if Nibley City can do something, why can't Logan do something? Why can't somebody else do something? And North Logan is, uh, first of all, they have better recreational facilities than we have right now, but they're on our heels and a full running close second in terms of taking the next step. So then we'd also ask council, are there, and, and rec community, are there other options we should be considering? Are those options clear? We go it alone? We stop going along and wait for the group? Or we go it along, go it alone, do it alone? And see if something develops with, uh, with the group approach. Aaron?
Kind of clarifying question.
Yes, please.
So the reason this isn't happening on county scale, uh, county level is because we can't convince four county representatives to vote yes to the looking at this? Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
And we have no ability to encourage residents in any of these cities you just mentioned to reach out to our county representatives and tell them our opinions?
So there's a couple of ways to answer that. I'll try all of them.
Crazy.
Watching the dynamic of the county council. Uh, I'll, I'll say, Aaron rejected that it's broken.
Oh, wasn't it?
I'm sorry. Um, there's a dynamic there that, I mean, we had to literally drag the county to the table to say, look, guys, you're not going to have trash collected anymore from Logan City. You need to do something to serve the unincorporated part of the county with trash collection. And we don't want to go through that. You need to, in fact, because of the ownership of the landfill and this, this, this. The county, what we, we, we don't, we don't see the county council supporting this. Now, progress has made one election at a time. So there's some chance that, uh, uh, an election in November would change the, the, the consistency of the county council to where they might be amenable to it. And I know that there are three county council members that are, uh, a lot more amenable than the other four. There's another approach to this, and that is to follow the model of the open space initiative, which the county council wasn't very interested in that either. But there was a ground swell of citizens support. A citizen committee was, you know, that got together and built enough momentum for that idea that the county council allowed that to go on the ballot. built enough momentum for that idea that the county council allowed that to go on the ballot. And voters approved that bond for twenty million dollars to buy open space. That's another option to do a direct democracy sort of and run. Or, and it was, it, it was still the county council allowing it to go on the ballot. They did like enough signatures to get it on the ballot without county council, but I'm not of my mind. To have the county get on board with this. I think the county divested themselves of owning a landfill, offering a countywide library. EMS, uh, fire, some of that got voiced it onto the regions within the county because Logan also got tired of doing those things. I don't have to find work by any means on what the county council may or may not do. That's, they'll do whatever the council's gonna do, but uh, I, I think it's a long shot to wait for the council to to do, to do something about a countywide recreation program as appropriate as it seems to be. That's my opinion. Eric?
Oh, I've got a couple of questions on that, so.
And you all are invited to participate in this discussion, please.
One of my understandings of the reason we were given the feasibility study was to gather the information of how it would look, whether we did it ourselves or needed someone else, wouldn't that information be helpful in convincing other southern community maybe? Because I like, I mean, in North Logan, they don't have nice facilities in the west, but I don't want to build North Logan. I'm tired of driving R S L. I want something on the south.
Yeah, I don't think there's any question between the cities, North Logan and the city south of Logan, that a single little rec space won't solve the problem. And I'm not sure that any of us understand. You know, when you're providing services, I think there's an economy of scale. Nibley City can build something this big, together with you, build something this big. Right? And, and whether you're collecting trash, treating wastewater treatment, or providing full water, there's an economy of scale to all of this. But I'm not sure that economy of scale goes to building two rec centers. Right? If we're all gonna be able to participate and conveniently transport ourselves and our kids to one rec center, there's an economy of scale there. But if we say that's not gonna happen because we have a southern community and a northern community, both of which need rec centers that are close to that. I, I think we kind of lose the economy of scale when we go beyond a southern region and a northern region. And Logan could be what we're fighting over. We're competing with one another over. But there's a, I'll be frank about it, there's a definite uh, feeling from at least some of the elected officials outside of Logan that this should not be built in Logan. Because of Logan's track record of, yeah, we'll do it. But at some point we get tired of servicing the entire county and that's gonna become ours or you know, it'll be a different thing. It'd be like a library. To me, it's not, we weren't close to a county library, maybe.
Yeah, so maybe number three is the no brainer. Uh, we do our own thing and we participate as things develop throughout the county, if it happens, or if it's just a, a southern part. Because we, Nibley, we decided that we as a city should, and feel obligated to provide something. And so our feasibility study, even if it says, you know, I'll even build a shed and put soccer field in it, we should still build that there. And if other stuff happens, great. That sounds great, so.
So no brand in terms of, we should just do that. We should do that, okay? And just, so I'm being clear. Uh, we may put money into that feasibility study that if this regional plan develops some of what we pay for information-wise on that feasibility study, in other words, the cost, understanding the cost of that shed. But we don't build that shed. I always say to the engineers, well, I learned something at least. My project failed, but I learned something. But we are putting perhaps some money at risk. Okay. The mom bear solution.
Well, I thought.
Okay.
You mentioned that North Logan developed pretty quick to get on board with the regional thing that went too far behind. What was your stance with the other communities? I'm sure some are like ground zero.
Yeah. Um, and Chad and Justin, in case you need to jump in, yeah, sure, I'm, I'm on the right track. Richmond is very much in favor. Smithfield actually has a pretty good deal going with, uh, the Cash County School District. I don't think they're gonna participate. Um, it's not perfect with the school district, but I'm not sure they'd be on board. Uh, Logan is definitely interested in the direct space and I feel like they're, you know, they're not getting that satisfied.
And to be clear, it would be Logan citizens and the Logan congregation, but there, there doesn't seem to be support from the Logan Parks and Recreation Director or all of the political, that this city council, and, and I think we talked with their support or little to no support from the council.
Yeah, Mike Johnson newly elected to Logan Council, you too. He took our pictures, actually.
He's a photographer.
Yeah. He was at the meeting, he supports it. He said, I know that there are, I think, Ernesto.
Ernesto, yeah, I see through him in support.
So it's not without supporting the local, uh, the Logan world. But I'm not sure, and, you know, another election that's been hoping for a year and a half there, so. Uh, okay.
So I gotta save that little bit of information and has a little bit of force where it needs at. I think I don't really wanna wait for other groups to maybe get themselves organized enough that maybe they can participate and commit. Although it seems like some of them definitely are. And, and I love the idea of, if they are ready, we can bring them on board. See how that works. I think it momentum and moving, I think people like other communities more likely to say, oh, we hurry up, we, we get part of this. And maybe it's to our betterment. My biggest concern is it's just gonna sit around for a really long time and our residents are gonna say, it's been another seven years. A lot of cities came together and in the meantime, my kid is now nineteen and I'm leaving home. And missed out on that opportunity.
Yeah.
And I think a lot of residents will say, you feel about.
Yeah, and, and, you know, we spent a lot of time on Tuesday meeting with all the, all the towns and, uh, um, you know, I said the same thing. He said, this is what, why, why are you guys going it alone? It's like, we're tired of waiting for the rest of it. We just feel like we need to do something.
Well, let's move to higher reaction.
So Hiram has shown mostly indifference. So we would have a meeting with Hiram and So this goes way back to before we started our Parks and Rec master plans review. Is when you had that meeting.
Yeah, so I, I report to Hiram City and Wellsville City on the, on the status of our plan for all the program in particular because we cooperate with them. And, and I've reported that here. And, um, that, that same report to Hiram City, uh, they were curious about where we're at in the recreation because they had heard that they were in the process. And so I, I simply updated them on the, on the fact that we were going to the process of R F P. I, I did ask them if they were interested in maybe participating in gathering data. And what was interesting is, is, um, the Paris City Mayor initially thought that we were coming to them to ask for money to support something in terms of indoor recreation. I said, that's not the case. We're not here today to ask for money. But we are here, uh, we're curious to know if you cooperate in collecting data. And, and the reason I asked that question is if they provide, um, resident data addresses, bone members, et cetera, the process of collecting data is expedited and it's less expensive for us or whoever's doing the study. And so they did, uh, they did indicate, and Justin, correct me if I'm wrong, if I'm missing anything or forgetting something. Uh, they, they, they cooperate. Um, in terms of Wellsville City, I went to the Wellsville meet the candidates and I spoke with several of the candidates, just curious on where we're at with question recreation. And, um, and then other elected official, officials there and Scott, the city manager, said, yeah, we'll cooperate with, with whatever you need in terms of collecting data. Now, we haven't put a price tag on that. We haven't said, you know, we appreciate, you know, some financial support for collecting that data. Um, but they haven't indicated that they're looking out there. So that, that's where we're at with those two communities.
Yeah, let's see. Providence came to the first of these two interesting games. And they brought the city manager Ryan Snow and the guy that runs the baseball program in Providence. So they said, our citizens aren't interested in anything except organized baseball.
Who was last to have to call them.
Which, we, we think that they may have been answering their phone.
Yeah, that's all of you respect in Providence. The reality is they're, the way that they're staffed, they, they they don't have one capacity to handle recreation beyond these. They, they don't look beyond that, because we heard that.
So if we do a, actually, any of those options means that Nibley City could take a leadership role in reaching out to Logan, especially our neighboring communities. In fact, we talked, uh, Lindsay and I talked about in the Tuesday meeting about her starting to reach out, she's quite persuasive, by the way, so good for her. Reaching out to other communities. And I said, you know, I'd be happy to do that in the south part, to be some kind of organizing force. And she said, great, why don't you do that right after you get on board with us? Yeah, I said, well, you know, I, I, I didn't tell her this, but I think number three, if that's what we're looking at, allows me to go do that, right? Still try to gain momentum for a larger scale. Because again, it's, I'm repeating, it's not, for me, it's not an acceptable solution to build one rec center that's north of two hundred or anywhere north of two. We, we need something in the south part of the valley, so. So to me, you know, we can, we can go it together, but we're gonna go it on that big scale. We're gonna be two rec centers, not one. Or none.
So in, in terms of our P that we currently have out, say we move ahead, we do our last interview, we pick one, one group to go in. What does it look like to modify the scope of our research to just include a regional scale for the south end of the valley? Are we allowed to do that?
Yeah.
After we pick, um, one group, after we pick somewhere?
So kind of like if we continue this option three, right? If we continue option three, what does that look like to us?
I mean, and, and is that like, would they say, oh, in that case, let's change our fee?
Yeah, that's a very good question. I mean, I doubt.
Yeah.
And, and we certainly, we can certainly negotiate that in, in the contract process. We built that into the R F P, so um, what we're asking them for on the worksheet that the three firms that we're interviewing will turn in is give us a market study for the entire valley because we know and realize that anyone in the entire valley and probably beyond would be interested in anything that we build. I mean, a lot of us are going into our cell, we're, you know, we're, we're traveling to, uh, get inside of a facility to do recreation. So market study, we're asking for the entire valley. And then they, they asked me, hey, please clarify statistically valid, um, area. Give me, give me some geography. Let's draw some lines so that we can give you some good numbers. So currently we're asking them primary, um, oh, what, what was the word I was using? R F P? The, the primary area is Nibley City. The second area is Nibley City and the south towns, primarily Hiram and Wellsville. And then tertiary would be, uh, South Logan and the rest of the south, south of, of, uh, Cash County. So Providence, I mean, no, they haven't committed to, you know, helping us out in, in terms of ga- gathering the data. But they do have ways of soliciting data and getting, uh, some answers whether they cooperate or not. So that, that's a wrap. So we already have that built in. Could we expand that beyond that? Justin, how do we answer that?
Yeah, absolutely. Just, we just need to pick somebody, get them in here, sit down and have a conversation and, and hammer out a scope and then start hammering on the fee. And if the fee doesn't work, we gotta tell them, that fee doesn't work. Can you do something different or we gotta go to somebody else?
Or we go to these others, our neighbor cities and say, you have a great, you have a great feasibility study sitting here. Please pay us on the share.
That, that's definitely possible.
Possible. Yeah. Yeah, I, I'm, I'm, I'm glad to share information, um. I'd like to address that. I I feel like we should share with anyone who wants to see the information that we get from our feasibility study, even if we're the only ones to pay for. If you feel different than that, we should talk about, I mean, it's Nibley citizens' money, I know, but it's not protected by any sort of, you know, like so property or even term anything else. So, and, and I think it shows a willingness to work with other communities to say, look, here's what we we think this is the reason why you should be involved too. We need hearsay, it's not that much different to ours. But it's still different to, we don't have to decide that.
Uh, it doesn't seem like moving forward, even if you enter into a river with other cities to work on this that our, Nibley residents would probably be most appreciative if we found that, that facility built in it. And we fight for that because I don't think we should be paying for a facility where our residents have to drive for fifteen minutes, you know, out, out of Nibley City.
Yeah, yeah, it's a great point. And there's a whole nother ongoing saga here. Um, it's one thing to build it, it's another thing to operate it. And I'm way more comfortable, or I, I, I'll say, I'm very comfortable with Nibley City through fees and so forth to offset the cost of Nibley City operating a rec center. Especially, I'll say it, more so than Logan City. Uh, it doesn't mean that it couldn't go, you know, in, in the higher or somewhere else, but I'm I'm of the opinion that Nibley City would, it should go in our town. And that'll, that'll be a decision that we will make, the council will make, uh, someday, you know? If we do a regional feasibility study, that part of the feasibility study is size switch. We would be lobbying for, I think, Nibley City to be that spot. We have land.
We're certainly on a central location. And we're on the highway. I mean, so all those things.
Between two highways, man, we just wanted to build some
Everybody
dodgeball and
Everybody
grocery stores and, you know.
All around the verge of, they're particularly, all around the
That's a direct quote. You, yeah, yeah, we're on the verge of greatness. I've been saying that for twenty years.
I think, oh, I was just reading it, like, I think we're already on the path. Nibley City is gonna do something. And, and we all need to write it out in this room and say, yeah, we're gonna do something, right? And if the county or the structural thing happens, great, it might maybe be related to what we do. It might be more, but we as a city know that we have needs and know that we want to fulfill those needs. And we'll, we'll still build something. I don't, there's, we might have seven things built, but right, like, Nibley City is going to put something, I said. I'm dedicated to it.
Yeah, okay, and I hear you, but that doesn't include me or Chad from muscle trying to work with other towns. I'll, I'll see what pops up, right? But then when Providence keeps paying to come visit you, maybe not. Maybe let's start answering. Go ahead, Josh, Josh.
The, the other option, I know there, I showed a Saturday, so I can't see Justin. I know there was some discussion or had, I don't know, moving uh, past many months about a P P P or private, or private public. Yeah, is that, is that bad or is that, that still in discussion as well? I mean, there's it's, to me, one of the options to where, yeah, everybody's doing something, but it's also even more vital than these other options as well. Justin, I would say certainly not that. I feel like it's still certainly a possibility and there could be worked into uh, whatever solution. Chad and I talked about that a little bit today. Is it, uh, you know, do we push, would, if they come back to us, do we push them to try to regionalize or try to centralize to our regional park or you know, we look at maybe, you know, maybe we say, if they're looking for just big houses, is that just something that we allow over here? Don't include in this big complex, you know, I think, I don't think that at all. And it's definitely part of the conversation. I still don't exactly know if this.
Yeah, that's, that's something that we asked, um, Yeah, that's, that's something that we asked, um, several of those that proposed, uh, in our, it, it's a part of our questioning. And some of, some of these firms have more or less experience in terms of working with prior partnerships, but. We're certainly interested in exploring it. If it offers something for a community, then I, I see it as a part of the equation. But that's ultimately something that the state council will decide, and, and you'll just have to look at the merits of more than just.
And Chad has read this on those post-ills.
Yeah, I would, I would add a couple of things to like, about random thoughts written down, take a look at these guys. I know it's easy to talk about indoor space at this time of year, when we're coming out of a winter and. Jared mentioned it, I told Chad, I was supposed to be at the RSL Center at nine ten tonight, play soccer, but. I'm late, I'm gonna miss it, it'll be the fourth. Be the third time I've been there this week, and. It's, it's a year-round thing though too, so, like I said, it's easier to talk about it this time of year, we might think that it's just a cold, cold month. Uh, use, but I know, I know the Anthony family sports complex is used year-round by my kids. Um. And so when we talk about indoor space, it's also an opportunity for just built space. Um, and so, yeah, it's not another part, enough that, but it ultimately did will be utilized. And I'm, I'm a big proponent of, of sports staying under season, that lost that battle, I've given up on that fight because all sports are about year-round. And, and with that, high schools, comp teams, I mean, they're, they're always looking for space, whether it's indoor or outdoor. At twelve months out of the year, unfortunately. A lot of things to, to consider in that balance.
That's my question, don't be shy.
Mayor, just to clarify, you, you and Chad and everyone are fit to go and do those things. As long as it does not have like given something that we more than my hair. And as long as you don't get distracted, okay, I trust you guys, but I just wanna make sure. That, like, that, that's my fault.
I mean, this discussion gives me. Uh. Backing from the council to go take part in these discussions, but. Be serious in those discussions about what we're trying to achieve and. Now, I'm not sure I did such a great job with, uh, Mayor Peterson. Like I say, she's pretty good, and, uh. I think I agreed with her until she told me that I didn't agree with her, and then I said, you're right, I don't agree with you. So, this discussion is good, I mean, it's not just me, it's like, no, yeah, this discussion is in the council and. And however this one turns out, I can. Uh, my, my magazine is full of, of common points. Yeah, go ahead.
I don't see any conflict for anyone else without moving forward and working with everyone else. The reason I said, because anything, at least I'm not, anything that we build, anything we do. Everyone else is just going to burn from that and be further ahead. So, trying to say that we should allocate a certain amount of money towards a group and. And we can't, you know, we spend a lot of personal thing. I just don't see it. I, I, any amount that we're going to do. Is still going to contribute to the entirety of the whole, one way or another.
Yeah, that's a good point, although it's not beyond the possibility that we spend money on our own feasibility study. And then we see this regional proposal starting to form out, and they could well ask us, well, if you guys. Want to be in on this, you need to contribute to this new feasibility study as well, and that's what this group of people will decide.
Yeah, and, I mean, at that point, we also, we may say, well, here's some great information, here's, here's seventy thousand dollars worth of information, you're welcome. Right? I, I just, I can't see any possibility where Ryan and I didn't put it all out, as long as we're forthcoming about it. And it's convincing to begin.
Yeah, let me try to. Let me try to tell you where I think other towns might be coming from, and that is that. Um. If we're trying to build a coalition for a regional recreation program. Someone doing something on their own kind of detracts from that coalition. Right? Uh, we went through this on trash collection, believe it or not, it was like, you know what? And again, that's a case where economy of scale is a big deal, right? And more trash cans this place management picks up and cashed out at a better rate we get. Right? There's a densification there. And so, when it became a big deal early on. And this council had to weigh on, weigh in on it early without having a contract or anything else to go on, but we said, yes, we're in. You know, we're gonna be part of, uh, county-wide trash collection contracted with a third party because. Um. Again, there's that economy of scale. Now, that is, there's some distinct differences between collecting trash and building. Recreation bills. Number one, we have to collect trash, there's no option, there's no option to fail. Right? So that forces people into the negotiating phase.
And there's a bit of.
Exactly, we cannot fail, otherwise it's gonna be sitting on a curve, right? So we cannot fail. And, and number two is, I forget number two, um. Yeah, the economy of scale, oh, the economy of scale is minimized, I think, because the economy of scale doesn't go. To a single rec center in Cash Valley. The economy of scale stops at, at least two facilities in Cash Valley, one in the north and one in the south. So that limits the advantage of the economy of scale.
I, I think that's my point, that we already know there's at least two, but we're not interested in anything that is one. Nor is anyone else that we're potentially grouping with, so we already know that, and anything that we do. Well, maybe our benefit from shared funds or a group effort turns into more outside facilities. In addition to our indoor facility that we are built, whereas in the north, it's an indoor facility with the same amount of funds, but with knowledge that we. Already guaranteed, we brought all the funds that we spent in person. I, I just don't see, as long as it's multiple facets, right? If it was one location, I can see this, but. As long as everyone else understands, hey, we're willing to share and we're spending money this way right now, I think we can win. I think that we can bring people on board on group setting.
Yeah, I, I mean, I agree, I think we're also near the perceptions, right? And this is the way it works politically, and sitting in the room with Logan. Citizen saying, what? You guys are already working on this? We're the ones that called this meeting and you need to tell us that you're already working on this, that means it might not get built in Logan. We're adamant about being built in Nibley so that our residents have access to it, while everyone else feels the same way, right?
I wouldn't even tell forty-eighters.
Richmond has fun, they offered it.
Straight out of, in your, in your.
In, in, you know, they offered it in the first meeting. But we weren't interested in going that far.
Yeah, they offered to sell it and give us the funds, a part of the concern a little bit also is. Oh, competition over RAPS funds. And we're all going with our hand out to RAPS, or we're collectively going with our hand out to RAPS, is also just in their minds. Good point. We're, I think we can collectively go for the RAPS ones, but again, we, in addition to both doing it on, well, that's part of the. Right? We build a building, RAPS fund is going to support development in the north and south portions, the development, south portion will be revealed. Because we done the north and south, so in the north, we have building. I, I think that there's a way to write that and group-wise win on all those RAPS ones, but still. Build, let's see what side.
Yeah, I mean, I think if, if we go in with the RAPS application, because Nibley City is building a regional facility available to. Certainly everyone within striking distance of, in the south. Uh. There's almost so much RAPS money to go around, and I think that awarding that contract can dilute the possibility of awarding another contract in the north. Didn't we just build one of these?
And, that's absolutely true, but if they have to look at. How they spend the money in the first line yet, I totally agree with that, and that's why I say, I think, I think there's a group side that we do need to be aware of. I don't think it's the slowest up on the individual side.
If, if you look at RAPS tax awards right now, I'm looking at twenty twenty-three, and, and they're spread across the valley. And, and they intentionally do that because they, they want to be equitable.
Yeah.
And, and I think they would continue with that same, same approach. I, I've seen them favoring, you know, one town over another. Um, I know David's, in a meeting that we attended, said that, um. The only support that the county may offer is through RAPS tax. And they could potentially earmark some future RAPS tax that perhaps support, you know, if you go a recreation facility. And that's about as far as he went in terms of.
Yeah, well. I mean, it's a whole process, it's similar to how we fund transportation projects with sales tax, there's a. There's a committee, technical committee that reigns these, turns the order of the county council, says, here's our recommendation. I think it's about three million dollars a year in RAPS tax. Seems like. That's, that's probably.
Yes, two hundred and sixty-six hundred. At least six hundred and twenty-three, and then restaurant is like three hundred. Yeah. The restaurant total, so the restaurant total is about, you go to, um. Private entities and nonprofits.
Yeah.
And, and they're looking for a travel insurance event.
Right.
And together, they're about four, yeah, about four of them together.
Just, just real quick history on Firefly Parks, um, most of the RAPS, they did do, uh, any payment to Nibley City of seven, three. If I remember right, thousand dollars for like the last seven or eight years until they, uh. Pay all the season, but the, the moral of the story is, we haven't, because of that, we haven't even had, we haven't been able to ask for more RAPS money. We've kind of tied up in that, but that is, uh, we end this year, so this will be the first year. That I think you could say, and I'll say it might be next year, I gotta check the timeline. On whatever, Nibley City, and, and that's for development of Firefly, correct? They, they know, if it's a purchase was something else. But we got refunded one point six grand in the shift, correct? When you spent four hundred thousand and got one point six million, whatever. Hey, we're in a real estate business, apparently, maybe, it's six years later, but it's not too bad. Great. Other than some more things, I know, I don't know the agreement with the Hennany Sports Complex, that was just completely donated, but just the fact. That North Logan is still interested in something regional goes to show that the demand is there. I don't think Nibley's gonna build anything large enough. That can take that demand away from the whole, you know, the entire south, south end of the valley. And the other thing is, I know I mentioned that it is a year-round thing, but I believe we've already missed the limit for, for next winter. Um, you know, that's highest demand, so. The time, kind of the timeline and how that looks going forward, even if we program or even if we, with Chad's current type or the. Timeline that, even something was approved, it's still not gonna be. Ready, something to be built and, and operational by, by next winter, so.
No, I mean, we, we have to go ask citizens to take out the office. Yeah, right, the next office, we're having to get this out of twenty twenty-four election.
It's still like that.
So the, I think the line, right, but success, success oriented schedule is a, a bonding. Election in twenty twenty-five.
Back to case and, and I resonated with that, I got a flyer, seven years CP nine, so, these are my names, so I. Swap me there.
I'm gonna say, as well, it just seems like the profit is slowing down. And if other communities want to be part of this, they can help us. The train is not going so fast. Right now, that we can't make permanent for them, but if they're not interested, they're not going to catch. So the ones that genuinely interested and are willing to move forward, there's room for us to continue moving forward. With our current plans, collect the information we need and still have room to stay. We do want others to be part of this, but we're not gonna sit around and wait. And then definitely on the time, this is the, the, and we have an actual deadline, people can be gathered. I don't know if we can, we all see the same way. And there's just not a deadline that says you have to have an outdoor recreation space.
It was five years ago.
The deadline?
Yeah.
I said, when your kids were one eighty, this. I just, I don't understand that, I'm not, I left a question last minute in this study, and they were full of. Oh, solid plan going forward, and knowing how it's gonna look.
Yeah. I'll mention one more thing, I, I think it's obvious, but the more we wait, the more expensive it gets. And unless something drastically changes something, so that is a consideration, I think.
So once you build everything now.
Right now.
But, you can't take that as a statement, I know I made that statement in Parks and Rec. Can't take that all the way to, to say we can build everything now. Yeah, we are, that's very, that's very, very, very. Yeah. Just keep saying, just keep saying. Okay, I, I feel like, I know what to go forward with. Chad, Justin, thanks all for this discussion. Uh, we're moving forward, we have, Chad, you have one more interview on the feasibility.
Tomorrow.
And, you know, we'll probably be coming back to the council with, uh. Chad will be coming back to the council requesting a board of contracts. And I'm gonna go schmooze with the other mayors. And tell them, we're really, we're right behind, no, you're right behind us, you're right behind us. There's a guy who was talking to me and said, uh, he has this on his office. A sign that said, I didn't go to engineering school for four years to have to talk to other people.
Didn't say words, no.
Okay, so that's thoughts, thank you.
So just one thing, I know most of the stage could be here anyway, but one thing is, Mayor, I think I, I like the idea. I know we're kind of rapid process, but I like the idea of. Will there be someone else going up specifically asking, you know, the middle, middle, the long, the high, like a very staple ask of. Hey, are you willing to give us either the data or the two, three thousand dollars, whatever, to include your citizens? In our feasibility study and market analysis, like, that's a very direct, like, if you want to do that tomorrow.
Get some skin in the game.
Yeah, I'd say, hey, whether it's the data or money or however else. That seems, we're gonna come down that process and now we can end this conversation of picking our person and say. Actually, you can set up just these three for, for Nibley's, Nibley's primary, and now we can add Millville and make Providence to the. The secondary, because they said the middle.
Right, we can make that the right answer, you know, people want all, it's essentially creating a coalition that, right?
Yeah, yeah. And, and that's the, that will issue, we're asked available as the South Coalition, yeah, one hundred percent.
If, if you show them the scope of what you're asking, or you're, we're already doing that, so I would just show them, maybe this is what. Yeah, we're already, we're already concluding, we're pulling, yeah, like, you're not, you're in. You're invited, should we, should we say, oh, that's a birthday, this is your birthday to come join us? Yeah. You could provide some information, we have that much more to lose to use the, the facilities.
Yeah.
And give the quote to. Yeah, yeah. So, okay, maybe they aren't volunteering to be a part of that effort, is that, is that what you're saying? Go out and hand shake with citizens or cities?
Either the city.
Yeah, I, I mean, I'm like, maybe, if the engineer wants to do that, that's volunteer, yeah. Communications, maybe, or something.
Well, well, we're gonna say it. Yeah. And, and everyone knows Chad, so. And maybe you all, you know, to be a part of it, too. But I, I mean, I, I think there's. My, my own story on this, I got asked when I was a candidate for mayor, so would you commit to funding for a, outdoor rec center? Said, no. But I committed to studying it, understand what we can do, and putting it to a vote of the citizens. I mean. This has to go to a vote of the citizens, that's all there is to. This has to go through a vote of citizens. That's always true. And I'm I'm really excited to get to that point. A successful feasibility study is one that ends with a referendum that says, yes. We as the citizens of Nidley and whoever else will join us would rather have a rec center than our own money. That's our goal.
Mayor, one one thing that was interesting in the interviews today is one of the presenters talked about, I asked him about constraints. Because I knew that was a question that was in your mind, but they also brought up imbalance opportunities. And and they talked about how we're poised to create opportunities. And and how we're leading the way. And that was an interesting perspective that I've considered. I think there's a lot of opportunities. And and there's a lot of needs that are unmet. We'll see how it goes out.
Yeah, well, a constraint is just an opportunity to solve that constraint, right? Yeah, engineer versus salesman. Okay, thanks. Any any last words? Well, we'll move on to our agenda. Parks and Recreation, thank you so much for your assistance, for the service to our citizens. Uh, thanks for coming out tonight and I really like this opportunity. For us to get together. And I know it means you have to go to another meeting. And Claire, you go to the last meeting, so I'll continue to thank you for that, but. Thanks for coming out and being part of this discussion. And thanks for doing your first, I think, honor too. Yeah, okay. The second ordinance is twenty four oh one. This is the second meeting on modifying accessory dwelling units in. Too many houses. You have a monitoring sensor or just jump into it?
Yeah, just don't. All right, um, so if should I should I just give you an update on some of the follow up items?
Yeah, you remember what we talked about before. So let's work each one out.
Yeah. So just briefly, well, what we're talking about primarily is to address barriers to. Developing accessory dwelling units within our ordinance. Um, and if in support of the modern, you can have influence, so. Some some of the questions that were raised, I just wanted to bring those up. There was a question that came up regarding short term rentals. Um, and just to be clear, there's no proposed changes to the short term rental provisions, which they are allowed within within um accessory dwelling units. Only one is allowed per property because necessarily, even though even though there's a lift on um. This only proposes a link that you don't need uh the the property to be owner occupied. You could only have lawn children on properties and it still, you know, that would require different licenses. I just wanted to address that. Uh, there was a question about. Um, looking at the barriers to building ADUs. I I started to address this. I just kind of wanted to tie this off. Um, there haven't, there haven't been any actual denied ADU applications. But there have been some inquiries uh that that have have expressed, you know, some issues with being able to do it. One of them was owner, this owner occupation requirement. Or I think I had this two or three. Perspective, you know, AD uh owners. They express that that that's a barrier for them. Um, the setbacks. For some, it just doesn't fit on the lot. Um, and then the height requirements, specifically the one that uh. You know, that can't be taller than primary dwellings as well. There's a lot of single story units and a lot of these, they want to build a garage or something like that. There was also a discussion on front yard coverage. And just just to follow up on that, just looking at. How there's, you know, what's already being proposed as a front yard setback, uh which is thirty feet, typically thirty five, it's longer to. And that along with the square footage limitations um based upon the lot size, staff doesn't really feel like. It's necessary to impose that that maximum twenty five percent coverage. But, you know, if the council wants that, if if the council's concerned about about that, that could in maybe few new locations come into play. If if you don't, you know, if you don't want that to, you know, take up. Be so intrusive, I guess, visually intrusive on on the area, but but it feels like the the front yard setback. Along with the square footage limitation already kind of accomplishes that. The next, uh, the the last follow up item is us, you know, this this separate water and sub meter question and and. You know, trying trying to distance out like cutting into the asphalt and maybe it comes back. Uh, so. One one potential amendment that the staff are offering uh. And this isn't in the agenda item report. It's it's just something, you know, we discussed, so we thought we'd put it up on the screen and it's just kind of a consideration and a discussion. It's it's just to state, and in short, that if if they uh if they do connect. If they do, if they do add a separate wire or sewer connection, then then they would be subject to the full impact fee. If they don't, then they're on, they're subject to half of that. So we feel like that that would be appropriate, you know, well, to incentivize adding additional meter. Still providing them an option to do so. And and it feels, uh, you know, it it seems like it's it's appropriate when we think about the. You know, the purpose of the impact fee, which which is, you know, really covered issue then. And if they're adding additional meter, you know, one one might argue that, well, there's they're proposing additional command or system that way. So that's 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 one way to kind of address that issue. Um, still allow it, but. But it's required a full impact fee for that. Okay, I think that's it's everything I have involved and.
So that's the, that would be a possible amendment.
Yeah, possible amendment is. Really, uh, yeah, so the bullet points, there was two bullet points, amend that code, state the following, and I just put it in there.
Yeah. Well, we're just here. Good. So I was wanting to, as I just said, uh, the only thing along the, so under section E. On A, under eighteen, we have the uh the graph. So either he won a. Or others eighteen, I don't know, eighteen, you know, that graph or the side block or the maximum square footage. And so I just needed. Because that's what I understood is I read through this this week. And then in section E one A, I put the maximum square footage is twelve hundred square feet. So is it a table or is it twelve hundred? Because those don't match.
So they. They grab, I believe, that they're looking at it for accessory buildings. Um, so not accessory dwelling units, there this square, this square footage limitation for accessory dwelling.
Okay, so that's a big combination of all accessory dwelling buildings.
It it's access, it's accessory building, so it's it's.
Yeah, twelve hundred or not. So, right.
Yeah, that's right. So they're they're in a section in the proposed ordinance. That's incorporated into accessory building portion. But we, yes, we're not proposing any change to that. So there's the other limitations on square footage for all accessory buildings.
Okay.
And then accessory dwelling units is just based on the floor area. Um, of the. Of, you know, of living space. Why you say that? I'm gonna pull up the ordinance in case there's other changes or clarification.
Well, we should have some. This is giving a motion, but there's a question. No, I mean, I'm. Whatever, you should add clarification. Because why I read that, that's why I saw the two. And we should just add in there an eighteen. Uh, a total of accessory buildings, you know, or something to help clarify that, because. When I, when I first turned to that, I got, oh, well, I. We've seen this to your attention, so that's why I wanted a clarification.
So, um. That that is for each each individual accessory building on a lot. That's the way that staff has interpreted that, and we we're not proposing any changes to that. You can't have, they, if they're in their rear yard area, they can't be greater than twenty five percent.
Right.
But like, depending on the lot size. This is just saying, if we get a proposal for accessory building, depending on the lot size, there there's that limitation, whether it's a thousand or two thousand. Up to five thousand square feet. Um, so. Maybe there, maybe there's something that can be clarified there, but I think, um. You know, we're not proposing any changes to that. And and so if I think.
Pretty good, see, I understand how to handle that. No, no, but I see it works, but I don't think I can fix. The only other question I had is, I thought we could discuss, I know. You know, the height and everything we're moving, but I thought we still have, I didn't see, and I read through this this week. I thought we still were saying the accessory dwelling unit had to be like. Compared to, well, compared to the primary dwelling in like color or. Or something so that it didn't like stick out like a sore thumb. So that it wouldn't.
Yeah, so that was never, that was in the draft in the original accessory dwelling unit um ordinance.
We did, but we had it defined, stick out like a sore.
Yeah, right. The the difficulty there, some of the.
Similar colors scheme, and you can figure it simple as that, yes. I I mean, I can't really discuss that. I've only looked at the whole graph and.
Yeah, yeah, that that wasn't, that wasn't part of the draft that the planning commission considered. And at the time, we discussed that. Well, we don't, we can't have um design standards for single family homes. So it didn't really make a whole lot of sense to try to come up with them, accessory dwelling units.
Well, thank you for your questions. Okay.
You can just cut that space to permit, do you have a motion?
No. We're leaving up that. Sure, give us a mobile. I think you're ready.
I remember, yeah. I made a motion to approve ordinance twenty four dash oh one, four seven three.
Okay, we'll approve second from one. That's with the staff recommendations. Uh, not the way I heard the motion, I need to take a second, second about. I like the idea of the motion at the time, yeah, it was one of the times. So if if you want to offer that amendment, that would be the time to do that. And if you don't, well, not even.
Oh, amended with the staff's recommendations, including the full impact fee with the second.
Uh, meters, made a motion to amend there, second from there, was discussed there.
Um, I saw two things on the cover sheet that we will change with this.
Yeah, can we just leave our discussion to the amendment, right?
Oh, yeah. Just to be, oh, okay. Yeah.
But, but, yeah. Okay. No more discussion on the amendment. All right, if those in favor of the amendment proposed by, uh, as written by staff, please say aye. Any opposed? Okay, amended motion in front of me. Now it's.
Okay. Uh, yeah, on the cover sheets, um. The, what is it called? The cover sheet, the inside, yeah, okay. The fifth, whereas paragraph just has a couple does in the first one. And then the second page is just the the date since passed by the council on the first day of February.
I'm gonna ask consent to make those changes. See no objection itself, so. Nathan, what do you want to?
Um, I'll just decide whether. I want to make stuff now here. I think it's there.
You think it is later?
Yeah, I'm good.
So. Uh, if if there's no more discussion, there's no objection to voting, I'm gonna ask for a vote. Is there an objection to both? Was perceived. So the motion before you is amended according to what staff had written on. Meters, other than that, it's as presented, and this is to adopt on second reading. Any question on the motion? Sarah, we have all four, please.
Most member Larson, who's.
In favor?
Brother Floterson, who's.
Yes.
Number man, who's.
In favor.
That's number himself, who's.
Yes.
Number three, who's. In favor.
I got that fight in favor and I'm opposed. We can tell, thank the council, thank staff, so. It's a good work. Just get rushing. Yeah, it'll be interesting to see if it's, if this swings the pendulum, right?
It's a one thing, it's gonna be awesome.
I can listen to that here. Let's see, let's get on to planning mission goals. Maybe you're still on hot seat.
All right, um. So with planning mission, the the planning mission, um. Discussed these these goals for the last couple of meetings. Uh, the the first meeting. Uh, staff presented. Last year's goals, twenty twenty three goal and the status of those. And, you know, that we set out to do a lot of different things. Um, they're shown up there on the screen. Uh, you know, some of which we completed, some are still in progress, there's a few that we have, we didn't get to. And, um. You know, just looking at this list of, you know, the, a lot, a lot of different minutes that we that we set out to complete, we did. Landscape ordinance and standards, conditioning uses, and now that was a disconditioning uses, that was some. The language chart together and dreaming that, and the planning mission spent a lot of time on that. Financial assurance provision, so those are all listed there. I probably don't necessarily need to go through all of these, but just to kind of illustrate that. Very, we we set out to do more than we accomplished and. And in general, you know, most of these uh. Most of these things, other than tension, you know, we talked about probably not focusing so on so much on cluster subdivisions, there's not a lot of. Um, you know, I, well, you know, that one, we actually did tweak a little bit already with with the language chart. Just because, but but other than that, you know. They discussed, that one probably didn't need to focus on, but other than that, most of the goals for twenty twenty four are to to finish out what we set up in twenty twenty three. Um, in addition to starting the process to update our general plan, which is gonna be a big effort. Um, so. You know, most of what's on the screen in progress or incomplete is folded into the goal, the proposed goal for twenty twenty three. Again, you know, we discussed some of the other things that we're accomplishing twenty twenty three outside of those goals, so updating, moderating the housing plan. Trail connectivity standard, standards when the trail terminates on the edge development. Um, modifying definition of dwelling unit when it's single family. Um, modifying definition of dwelling unit when it's single family, and our favorite, the animal and any assortments, so. We didn't actually set out to do that at the beginning of the year, but it did take a lot of our time, so. That was, that was a fun one, but. So for twenty twenty-four, I'll I'll go over what the proposed goals are. So first, we do have to get access connectivity intersection spacing standards. And Tom, um. Tom's kind of leading out on that, so, you know, we'll, we'll. As far as getting that effort going with the committee, that, you know, a lot of help, the planning mission will. Get involved as well as the council and and coming up with. With more of us, you know, connectivity standards, um. We're. We have the Parks and Rec Master Plan that we're wrapping up now, but just completing that update. Hopefully, in the early part of the year, we've had that that done and and adopted. Uh, Development Act Transportation Plan, which we, um. Which we started, we're under contract for that one, and we talked about that. I believe the last, uh, council meeting, and we'll we'll have officially kick off that one in a couple of weeks here. Um, but, you know, consultants are already working on that, so. Will work on that one, uh, continue to implement strategies and moderate income housing plan. Uh, that that one's, that one's important, um. You know, to to ensure we're making progress there, and the state checks up on us every year to see what progress we've made, so. That's that's helpful to have a. I guess a supervisor for that a little bit. Um, but, you know, we'll continue to work on that, uh. Start the process for the general plan update and, um. And mentioned previously that that we did put in a grant application. Probably hear back on that next month or early in April, and and we would. There'll there'll be a component of a local match, you know. For for that grant, and so that would be incorporated into budget. You know, for approval, but but just as a goal to get started on that. Um, it's been since twenty, twenty sixteen was when the. The last, uh, general plan was adopted. You know, population in Nidley was closer to five thousand, four hundred about, or, you know, over eight thousand now. Communities changed quite a bit, even in that relatively short amount of time. And, uh, the state now requires a new element within the general plan that. Um, we don't currently have, and that's and that's coordinating for, um. Water conservation, uh, land use plan, water conservation, and. It's a pretty extensive process to do that, we we need to have that done by the end of twenty twenty-five, so if we get started on that. We'll be compliant with that, but but it's also a good timing to update the whole general plan. Um, number six was something we set out to do, you know, we just, we didn't get to in twenty twenty-three, and that's update our taxation policy plan. Looking at, um. Areas that, you know, in particular, we we feel that we can more efficiently, um. Serve serve utilities, um, than maybe neighboring communities. And then, um. This, this number seven. It's a little lengthy on the wording there, but park parking for highway ones used by Corvus study. Uh, the county is is sponsoring that, it's in, it would be in partnership with Millville and Providence. And this, this looks at. Highway one sixty-five on its function and access, but also looks at the, um, potential economic development along the area. What what we can, um, reasonably. Expect as far as economic development, retail services, jobs along that corridor. And then, um, number eight is also a partnership with with Cache County, uh. We have our our previous goals in twenty twenty-three to come up with. Design standards, um, for for the town center. Area, uh, but. We felt it was appropriate to first, um, back up a little bit and come up with a master plan for that area, you know, and really. We're primarily talking about the area more of the Bridge Light Park, the Bridge Light Parks, you know, entitled and. And, you know, there might be some elements where we we talked about. Change of commercial areas in Bridge Light Park, but looking at the area going up to twenty-six hundred south and then in town center area. Uh, we felt have a area-specific master plan. That will help guide designing standards, um, for what comes in that area, yeah, so. So it's appropriate to do that, the county has expressed that, you know, through their countywide planning program, they. They they'd like to help with that, they did something similar with Pike Park, they they. Helped them develop the town center master plan, and we have, you know, kind of an element of that that was built back in twenty sixteen, but. Really need a refresh, given, you know, Bridge Light Park. So. So that's the. That's the post-goals for twenty twenty-four. Just coming to you tonight, if if you. You know, just for guidance, if you feel like this is appropriate, you can express that if you feel. We need any changes to these or any additions to these goals, things that we should be working toward in twenty twenty-four. You know, welcome your feedback.
I just have a question about number eight. So does Cache County say they have a planning division, or is this like a fee to pay, or is this a free service?
Yeah, so we are to pay, we are to pay a fee every year, um, for the countywide planner program. It's partly to pay for GIS and and other services with the county, but they. They have a countywide planner program who primarily provide services to communities that don't have. A city planner, or or, you know, just need kind of a. A. An additional help with, uh, a specific project, or, you know, some something in that line, but. But we we do receive benefits through their county trail, but we have received benefits through that program, but they have, at least while I've been moved on a specific project. Like they have needs other communities and they're offering that, you know, obviously, they can't do it in every community, they have one. Countywide planner, and they have some other support staff, but. But it's just offering, I guess, an individual help develop.
Yeah, what what does the city need to help plan in the recreation facility, could that county, can it do that? For cities?
I, I, I don't know if they have the skills at.
My drive, it's always too in front of.
And honestly, eight, we're gonna have to see, they have all the staff changes at at the county. Which is, I mean, we wanted to kick this off sooner, uh. It may come in a different form of partnership with the county to do that, but we're we're trying to. You know, work with them on that, I mean, they're 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 already looking at, we've had, we've had meetings with them on highway one sixty-five. I mean, really, seven and eight kind of relate to one another, um, so. Some of this could be an outgrowth of of number seven as well. Does this compare with others, and there's a lot to to ask in one year, is this about the same there? Like, I don't, I don't know if that's fair. Yeah.
We're ambitious.
Probably more ambitious. I did look at a lot of the genders and.
We won't finish the general plan update, but we might.
Okay, we'll start it. We do a lot more master planning in a lot of communities, I say that.
That's a good thing. Since you mentioned design standards, it reminds me that. I'm unclear on, uh, we're gonna, we're gonna be sure of counsel on. Concept plan for commercial development here, and then we'll fall to off, we'll go to the line of commission of course first. What do we do about commercial and institutional design standards that are on the books?
Good question, um, we might, uh.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's old, I was on the funding commission when we wrote those. Different good standards, we should go up a minute, or not, we should, because that's, that's gonna, I want to hold up that project over that. And the council can decide to relieve them of that, but also, I'm not sure. We should replace those that are there with something that's. Better.
Yeah, I I hate to make them the giddy big, but it's hard, but it is hard to update ordinances if you haven't worked with them at all. And we can, we can go through and we can pick and say, yeah, maybe that doesn't make sense, or we can do a thorough review. Um. But a lot of times that comes out when you're.
Yeah.
Working with it.
Yeah.
Um.
And and it's not a, it, I mean, if I, if I remember right, it's, it's not a guideline, it's a requirement.
Well, it's a requirement, but within, within the ordinance, it says. If you feel like you shouldn't do it, basically, and, oh, I mean, it's a requirement that they follow it. But. Really, there's a lot of discretion within the ordinance, and I, I would, within the design standard, I would like to make it. Add more teeth and take out the provisions that are like, yeah, maybe it's nice to do this, if you'd like, if you think it's.
So we made Maverick go through that process.
Right.
And. Their latest candidate doesn't conform to, by the way. I'm not complaining about that.
But I can say, it does, because when they came in, you told them, you can't do that because of this, this, and this.
Oh, yeah, that'll do it.
Oh, they they want to make it red.
Yeah, but they got rid of all the required penetration and. Cars and. All that stuff, it's just metal.
It's fine, it's fine, I I, and that's, that's a great example of us blindly. When you talk about a giddy big, we we don't want this new project to be a giddy big, actually Maverick was the first giddy big, and, you know, and. So, yeah, I'm not sure we really knew what we were doing, I'm not. My funny jacket, but it doesn't follow the design standards. I thought you did on that, I don't remember.
Okay, so I don't know. We could, we could put something on there to decide at least how strongly we need to enforce. What's there. According to ordinance, and if there's a strong requirement for enforcement, let's decide that it's. Good standards.
Mm-hmm, I mean, I think, I think a memo should say review. Review the design standards as well, um, and. Uh. Whether review and consider revisions or something, I I don't think that's too much, but.
Okay.
Yeah, that's.
I, I think that's just around the corner.
Yeah.
I hope.
Reviewing, it's, is that time to have a review and consider revisions to the.
Commercial and merge line traditional design standards.
Yeah.
My friend.
Yeah, no, I I actually, when when I interned a couple of years ago, a side project I had to do was to look at these and. That's something she does, though, she did. And it will be.
Oh.
Because, yeah, it was one of those things that we get to, but she, she did review and.
She, Sherry Pippin?
No, no, they interned, we had. She she was primarily working on the park signage, but she had a little extra time, so I said, why don't you review this and. You know, give some feedback on what you think should change, you can say it further.
Anything else, council, and, you know, I I. I think it's great to have goals and a plan, and then sometimes things just come up.
Go ahead. Um, this might go further than this discussion should, and maybe lead into report or something, but. Um, the relationship between funding, zoning, and their roles and their recommendations, and maybe even some that we as a council. Come up with. And here's I've been on that, that's kind of happened as needed, for instance, animal and use, etc. For. Basements. I don't really know what my question is, other than, these are great, and there are a lot, and I don't want to throw like, hey, how about these other ones? Is it the goal of council to also maybe, like. Get on board with these and and help carry some of, uh, do the lifting or create our own?
Uh, I mean, I think so, I think if the. Funding commission is an advisory body to the city council, and so hopefully. The council is giving enough direction to Levi of the funding commission to give advice on. What the council wants advice on. It doesn't mean that there's not room for innovation and creative thinking at the funding commission level either.
Right. Right. Great, uh, so with that being said, um, I've not been paying attention as much as I. Haven't asked of what's going on legislature-wise, so are any of these anticipating developments that you've seen there? Mostly asking to. Like go to the meetings currently, but asking only by us. So, maybe, maybe it doesn't quite answer your question, but we did have a goal last year to get compliance with state code. I, I mean, we could add that, I, I think it kind of implied we want to be in compliance, say, go, I. From what I've seen, um. There's not as much as last year as far as code changes we need to make, there's, there's not, there's not a whole lot, uh, there, there. I think they're trying to take it a step further. From that, and there's a lot more like programs, but there might, there's probably some, there'll probably be some of that. Um, that comes out of the legislature, and who knows, it's not over yet, and sometimes eleven hour they. There might be. A lot more, I mean, there's something brewing out there, uh, but for the big bills that they propose. It seems like it's not as much as last year, like the. The modern income housing plan stuff they did last year and the subdivision, really big and impactful for. You know, code changes, and I just don't see much of that this year.
I think last year, the legislature was focused on entitlement lots and entitlement projects, and I think this year it's more focused on. Giving access to money due to the overs open. So that you can get entitled, I'm not sure, exactly, right, and and I mean, last year. There was a perception that cities were holding up the process, so we saw all that stuff come down. Um, whether we were holding up the process or not, that stuff came down, this year, with interest rates the way they are. It's more about access to money, and so there's some creative thoughts going out of the legislature about how developers can get. Access to money, and I think the lead is doing a good job to say, yeah, that's fine, as long as cities don't get stuck holding a bag. Um. It it's funny, there's, there's one that hasn't even hit, the L P C. But we talked about. You know, requirements in the general plan. The number of requirements that state and legislature contemplates putting in. Uh, general plans for municipalities, you talked about a lot of conservation, well, you know, I, I. For a little while, we even flagged about weather protection, I said, so look, if, uh. If federal government's not going to protect weapons, I think the state should step up. Well, the state's proposal to that was, yeah, we'll step up and make cities put something in their general plan about weather protection. But. No, he just has the problem to us, I mean, the state needs to step up, and. That hasn't even hit the L P C, the L P C Legislative House Committee refuses to weigh in. On anything that are our actual words. In a draft, at least, and so a lot of this stuff is gonna come hot and heavy right at the end, because. People talk about a lot of things, but there's no words yet. So I I don't know, it's time, I thought was, was, so. That's all, just to give you.
I think right here is fine, yeah, my, my next questions are more related to, so when, some things, I mean. Remember we chat as they were discussing, they they started to ask, and they just said, hey, look, maybe we have. And why we're very closely connected, I think, to our strategy of. In the modern income housing that you're planning on implementing, uh. You know, something like, it's like, when do we need to look at our setbacks and reduce that, for, you know, maybe parking. Is part, we're asking for too much parking, and maybe. As far as portability, and and some of those things, so, as I look at our strategies and.
As far as affordability and and some of those things, so as I look at our strategies and moderate income. Having a point, I guess I'm excited about that one, and I think that's where a lot of the ones that I have ideas about. Will be focused, and that's why I asked the question about our relationship with, and so. I guess I'll go into meetings and speak in public comments or something, yeah, I. Doesn't sense.
The plan, yes. If you want my advice, uh, I think. It might be better to work it outside of a meeting, right, with Levi or with. Or or individual commissioners. Um. When the, in my opinion, when the Funding Commission is in session, it's their meeting, yeah, and. In fact, Jerry Mike used to forbid me from going to Funding Commission meetings because he says. We need to give the Funding Commission a chance to give us their recommendation, you'll get your chance, stay out of there. And honestly, goodness, I tried to not say too much. I just want to go and give a little bit of thought on what's coming to the council more than anything, but.
Um, and there's nothing that like restrains me from maybe like, hey, you two, you want to talk about this, doesn't matter, put it on the agenda, right, so I.
Well, absolutely, I I.
Yeah. Not really going to discuss remarks, I wanted to kind of. That for myself, so thank you.
And and. I like these workshop sessions, yeah, right, I thought it was good to have the Parks and Recreation Committee here tonight, the first time. You know, we've kind of connected with them in a workshop, I think that. Uh, the three week schedule I proposed before gives us an opportunity for workshop sessions with the Funding Commission, so if we want to exchange ideas, I think. Let's call a meeting on that third week. Not have a bunch of agenda items and stuff to prepare. But let's get together, plan, we all have to go to one more meeting that way, as opposed to them coming dark meeting and. Or vice versa, let's just sit down and talk about this stuff. So, I think that's, if you've got, if you've got topics there, let's let's pull one of those together.
Yeah, and I think, I think, uh, things come up and that's fine, like, this is, at this point in time, this is what we. Think we want to do, uh, and I think we should, you know, we'll we'll work toward this, but if something comes up. You know, that, we we can change our course and do something, to be honest, too. I I think that's, that's fine, we just need to understand that we only have so many resources to. To get, you know, to to accomplish these things.
I think this is a big back for once, I appreciate that.
Okay, um, we don't need to vote or anything, but this is a discussion giving direction. Will we done that topic for now? Let's let's keep on, actually, but. Uh, and with that, let's move to the last agenda of the council and staff reports. Uh. Larry, you want to start? Do you have anything you want to talk to us about? You know, okay, we're good, thanks for your service. Cheryl, you want to go next? You need to ask us about going to, um. Make term conference, or have you already asked us about that?
Um, I have, uh, four, four albums I already bought, so what's on the major department registration?
Oh. Oh, thank you.
But I keep be thinking about it and.
It's like, just before your life, we're always for the next meeting, just before, so.
Yeah, she's still, yeah, she's.
Didn't know, it has been for the next week, so email and text.
Seventeen, eighteen, nineteen of April. How many else? Are we going to drive? Yeah, okay, well, I get maybe.
This hasn't come into my thought process, but I check and.
Uh, Justin, let's, just to hear your biggest, okay, um. Just wanted to, okay, we had wellness quarter, we had wellness lunch, just with the staff the other day, I had a little weird. Sure, put that together on the kind of mental health wellness and checking in people, sounds good. It was, it was a little heavy, but. But it was, I think the whole point was to make sure you see other people and.
Did you have to talk to other people a little bit?
And, uh, so anyway, I was a little good, um. Budget season's coming up, uh, so it's not, uh, it's not like full swing yet, but sort of be thinking about the budget. And be thinking about particularly the projects you may have interested in, if you're interested in coming in, I don't care, I talked a little bit about sitting down and moving budget. Um, happy to explain anything that I can, um, your questions, um, let's, uh, you know, please, uh, start thinking about that. Uh, I wanted to give you an update, we, I was a little disappointed in the number of attorneys that we had respond to our R F E. Was, I guess, super surprised, but I was, I was disappointed in the number of, the quality we got, pretty good. Pretty excited about the the few that we did get, so we got some interviews for those, so next week, um, we'll, uh, Mayor and I and, uh. We went home, kind of sitting, you know, and probably, uh, uh, bring both contract back to you pretty quick on that. Uh, last meeting, we talked about twenty nine or south issue and a full option, just one late, it's not dead, you certainly didn't forget about it. Tom's working on things with developer, uh, he's in St. George's, we get a conference and just wasn't able to really pull that data together to bring it back. But it's definitely already working on that, we have to go. Uh, there was a gentleman here, uh, to talk to you guys about, uh, putting up, um, uh, cestrel boxes, I guess I made a little. Guys, you guys really cared, I need to, that on agenda, actually, any guys support that, or can I just go and put off some polls in a few parts?
So he's actually only interested in doing the line right now.
Yeah, yeah, he wants to be in the vacuum, really, but I think he wants to, the emails that I'm getting, or he wants to push that out and provide opportunities for. Uh, Eagle Scout projects and community projects and, I think he's just looking for a heads up and a thumbs up that we would support. On what we've seen throughout our properties. Um, and so I just looking for direction there, I feel good about it, um, and if it becomes a problem, we can certainly pull the plug on, but I should help you. Agenda item.
Anyway, my son, I also, uh, add bat boxes.
Yeah. And for, yeah, so he he spoke there last meeting, I'm glad that he's seeing these things, he, his full time job. Is wildlife biologist, working in the planning department, as a wildlife biologist for Eagle Mountain. So they have a planning staff of five, and one of those five. Is a wildlife biologist worrying about migratory patterns for wildlife and big game and, I mean. This guy want, and he lives in Eagle in remotes to, uh, Eagle Mountain. And I feel like Eagle Mountain is gonna pay this guy. And we're going to benefit from everything he works on down there, if if it fits what we want to do.
Sounds like an indoor stadium. I know, right, space, big bat box.
So, and he's full of energy, I mean, maybe you picked it out, uh. He's actually more full of energy than even in the cases at night, so I think he's a, a real asset as a volunteer in every city. And so.
You know?
Yeah, okay.
Well, the rest is, uh, you brought up the legislator, uh, legislation, legislative session. Uh, I just have a list of stuff, I can burn through the highlights, I'm happy to give you more information, or I don't have to know on that, but I did come forward if you're interested, but. Um, there are five hundred and eighty four numbered house bills this session and two hundred and seventy in Senate. Uh, so I believe that's, that's a record of our things past, but, uh, some of the big ones that they're talking about are, uh. Uh, Mayor alluded to, the state's actually, you know, stepping up their game and trying to provide opportunities to actually get houses built. There, uh, the governor has a gentleman on staff that is kind of focused on this. On the, uh, portal how we try to make something happen, and their idea right now is to try to take some of the P T I F money. Put it aside and provide it as a lower interest option for developers to go to if they meet certain criteria of. Uh, you know, portability and size and the, so they're working on that, uh, there's, there's some. Uh, it's an interesting idea, there's a lot of questions on what that would do to the P T I F, the law, municipalities, their money to the P T I F, the big bottom line. Uh, they invest very, uh. Thank you, conservatively, uh, there's very strict rules about what they can invest in, and there's some, there's some laws that likely will have to change. To even make this possibility, uh, and so it's kind of a quote out there, I don't know where it's going to get over, we'll finish line in the session. But it it sounded like it's got enough, if it doesn't make it this one, we'll probably bring it back next year. But for us, um, we actually don't put all of our money into P T I F, we talked about in the past policy where. Uh, cash flow banking matches the P T I, so all the investments and all the things or whatever, but they match it plus ten points. And that actually is, uh, uh, he's been really on top of that, making sure that we're getting that money this. Uh, I think we're ahead, since we started, we're ahead, you know, seventy thousand dollars, you know, we're ahead of what we would have if we would have just left it to P T I. So if things go there and, you know, interest is going great, we're making a ton of money on interest right now, ton of money. Um, and so. Um, anyway, there's questions about, you know, if they move that money in our other municipalities and start pulling out of P T I and from the mix of plots and. So that was kind of odd, um, interesting you got to talk about making, uh, municipalities address wildlife in their general plan. Is one of the, one of the, that another one, that's one of the bills out there right now, uh, there's a little bit of discussion about short term rentals and, um. Licensing and things like that, I'm not super updated on that, and I don't think it will really change a bunch of people here, um. There's a bill to talk about, uh, public official salaries and making sure that you have a separate clean. Public hearing for, uh, not only city council, but also, uh, you know, city manager, treasurer, field, appointed positions and. There's a lot of heartache about that, not so much the public hearing, but what does that mean? What does that mean if, you know, if this, if you have employees often have a job and need calendar, you have that folk hearing to be able to retain them? So there's some of those kinds of issues going on.
A little bit of update on that, um, Alan, our partner, he. Was with us, uh, he watches that, he's kind of a Google for information, he said, circle that particular bill. He said, what does that mean? I mean, it's basically kind of taken off the table for a while and that's. But that's what they just want to invite this year.
Yeah, but it's sponsored by Cash Flow Assembly.
Yeah, I was just going to mention that, I'd be surprised at how many of these, uh. Big legislation this year being voted by all legislators being, uh, Scott Sandoval and Casey Snyder and. Uh, Chris Olson's not technically our representative, but he obviously cares about us, he's got a bunch of big bills, so. Um, I feel like our area really swing is sick.
Um, yeah, it was like that last year, too, I mean, more things that are representatives, that was pretty amazing.
Yeah, probably, uh, one of the big ones for, uh, Senator, Representative Snyder is, uh, he made a, you know, water related changes. And how fun, he's trying to figure out a way to put more money into a fund to be able to construct large scale. Water projects, uh, you know, we're talking pretty big stuff. Um, but, you know, who could pay for it unless you pay for it, he tried, he tried to find a whole. And this bill, it got, it got happened way back then, so, you know, they're going to do some committees and some. Some stuff, try to figure out how to do this, um, so, um, that kind of put off the gas, but it's, it's an interesting idea. There's another one, uh, you know, putting together a committee, like the. It's almost like they're. They want form a committee of all the water districts in the Los Angeles front area and, uh, you know, our recommendation was try to get other organizations a little. They're talking, it's a committee that can go investigate, uh, kind of under a secret C V will, um, big projects. So pipeline from, uh. More under the right, cross state lines from the Colorado River and things like that, so. Uh, you know, we're all, uh, there's that committee that they're talking about putting together, there's the water, the changes, a lot of, uh, centers, sorry. President Snyder's bill comes from, uh, a visit that a bunch of legislators took and went back to, uh, Israel. And kind of worked on how they did things, how they managed things, and now, um, they've been able to successfully, uh, um. Build big water projects and district vision and how they're working, and so, anyway, not a big one. Uh, he's also pushing one that's not very popular at all right now about making water easier for ground pits to start operation and then taking away. Municipalities are very kind of ready to build a little bit, so, um, and he's taking a beating on this a little bit. Uh, there's, there's a bill, honestly, the way I see it, they're, they're attacking the stormwater program. And trying to take away the ability to comply with federal requirements, really, so I would wonder, like. If they really pass this law. I think, I mean, we probably, it would become normal, but I can't, this is, it's. On it being pushed under the guise of trying to get stormwater to the Great Salt Lake. So, they just.
Does it not get there now?
Well, exactly, but this, it's developer community trying to get out of regulation and using the hot button. Discussion item about the flavor of today to try to make it, it's, it's. It's comical, actually, in my opinion, uh, there was some legislation about. Uh, road fees, um, there's been a few cities in the state that are trying to implement a fee to, uh. Maintain roads, Provo was a big one, Pleasant Road was one, and, uh, there was, there was kind of a big lawsuit about it. And the, you know, that law, everybody been watching that like crazy, uh, for a while, and, uh, they, they're finally flushed out the courts. Yes, you can do it, there's a lot of things like, you know, uh, stipulations, similar impact fees where you like have to show why you need it, that that that. Do obviously, but the bottom line was you could do it, and there, in the midst of all that was, um. They, they, there's provisions about, you can do it for roads, but you're not allowed to do it for emergency services. And and some other things which, you know, that I think they're, they're trying to draw the line about, you know. What should be covered under sovereign tax and what should be able to charge a fee for. Or it feel like people are trying to get away from the true taxation process by implementing all these fees and to fix these problems instead of. Raising taxes like I should, it's just easier to be, so there's some of that discussion going on, uh, the EMS thing doesn't particularly apply to us because. Um. There's provision where if you're a certain size, you contract with somebody that you can't charge, we try to figure now. Uh, for EMS to cover, uh, county, uh, responding, uh, ambulance service. So, because the contract will be okay there, but anyway, discussions with, um. Uh, Logan City about it actually, because we also turned it back on one feet, um, I mean, writing on the walls. You know, some of Logan's going to say, you know, we're not having one anymore, and it's going to have to be a county run facility. So, here we go again, the county, sure, they're a small city at the last, I don't know, but, um. Uh, so anyway, that's an interesting one, um. Mayor mentioned, uh, there, there's, there's been these. There's been multiple efforts over the past few years to try and get developers into easier, cheaper money, and they, they see the municipal volume market. As that target, because we just, we just had to go borrow money for less than they can, so they're trying to figure out ways to get it in that market, and I don't understand. Exactly why they can't, who's telling them they can't, but they've tried a lot of dumb things to get there, like. Well, we're going to create these industrial districts and we're going to give them the power of eminent bidding, because that one checking mark allows them to hear. The least fault marks, they've got a lot of dumb ideas over the past couple of years, uh, this year, uh, they actually have this might make it. Um, but it's, it's, uh, it's, it's a household thirteen, and it. It basically allows them to create these districts and then go borrow money and. Um, build it and then they have to pay it off, pay the lien off or that portion of it off before we get occupancy of the house. So, or occupancy of the structure, so they, they really kind of try to kick the cities out of the whole process and they understand that that route has worked for them. Um, and that, you know, not going to keep them, expect the power that municipalities have, so, um. All might make it, I haven't, it's, um, it's got another three. all might make it. I have, it's, um, it's got another three, whatever, I can't remember. There's lives, pits, this business, I mean, but it's all just about how developers can go borrow money cheaper than on the regular open market.
To, to build infrastructure. And what's new to me about this one is that, that loan they take out to build infrastructure has to be paid off for the issue occupancy as opposed to making municipalities assume that law.
Yeah.
Which is crazy.
Uh, they pass a, they're about to pass, pretty sure they will, about, uh, division drinking water, having the ability to impose fee to basically manage and run, uh, the regulation. Better, I think it'd be a pretty small fee, but that might be something that comes up in our budget in the future. Uh, like, and they're talking, right now they're talking pretty small. At the cost. But as for them to be able to hire, uh, work on, do a better job of planning, doing the things that they need to do to make sure that people have safety in mind. Uh, there's another interesting one that is there, uh, there. Right now in municipal local elections are not partisan. They wanna make it so that if a candidate wishes to put in R or B next to their name on the election that they can. Uh, so there's not a law for that one, but, um, you know, that's just, I didn't, I tried that. I didn't, that's just, you know. Yeah, and then my favorite one is they are trying, well, guy has a bill out there right now to require, um, a election basically to adopt anything other than certified tax rate.
Like a citywide. Like an election that you don't have to talk at all. Because true to the taxation aspect of it.
Right, right.
But he sends some south, they're not, they're not willing to call anything. It's not a tax increase, it's by fee wars. You don't tax, if the rate doesn't change.
Your sales taxes.
Or more sales taxes. So it's not a tax increase, but it is a we'd like more, we don't have representative, oh, okay, just just get a better, you don't want everyone.
So I think, you know, coming into this whole legislative thing and, you know, I certainly, like, no, any next word really trying, this is my kind of my second rule go with this. And I feel like I've been trying to, I finally feel like I'm at least understanding where to go, how to look and know what's going on, even though it's a lot, I probably miss a lot. Um, so if you got, it, I'm, I'm feeling like I'm ready to start across. So like, how would be, how would be more influential? How do we, you know, actually push some of these things? Do some things. So then you gotta get this, not here, but, um, they're trying to be on all the committees we can, both, one we can, one we can, but you gotta go to the, you know, um, happy that year, so. And then I think think that, the other thing I have, I don't know if you guys are aware, I was in audit, I don't know if you guys want to see it.
Was that not a great part?
That's great.
Yeah, I like, fine, come.
I, I think they're bad. I think it's been one of the most embarrassing moments I think I've ever had as a councilman. So I sincerely apologize. I, I knew it, I mean, I knew it was coming, but I just told, oh.
When did he give it to you?
Uh, tonight, that's what he gave me tonight. He made it, you know, to me months ago and I just, uh, we, I, I mean, all I care is, are you gonna give me the audit? I mean, fix what you can do? No? Okay. And I just went on.
We don't need a draw.
Yeah, so my sincere apologies on failing to put the aud, we didn't need the fees. Um, very embarrassing. We'll not make that say it, yeah. And if anybody like a one copy tonight.
Catherine? We have three, I don't want to.
I have two. That's all I have. I give some mic reading.
Anybody you want in the conversation more?
Um, just, just that, uh, I mentioned the, that rezonant of, uh, the hot hollow area is gonna be on the agenda next meeting. Um, just to make you aware, there's a subdivision called Nively Coach, which is north of local coach. That's on, that's going to be on the agenda next week for the planning commission. Um, it's for a alumni class that's not going to come to the city council, but, uh, you know, the first stage they're going through is for the preliminary class and it's, you know, they're looking at an assisted living center and then, um, smaller single family laws and of, uh, fifty-five and over community around it. Um, so that that will be considered by the planning commission. It will, the assisted living center, the site plan, this is the city living center will likely come to the city council at a later meeting. Um, that's, that's the one stage in process that the city council will make a decision on. Um, not conditionally determined, but the site plan. Uh, so, so you'll probably see that in a, in a later meeting, but yeah, that, that one, that one's going forward. And then, uh, there's another rezonant that's, you know, potentially being re, will be reconsidered and that's, uh, the Gibbs property, they, they came back in with a new application to rezonate from R two, R two A. So it's going to be on an agenda and you can decide if you change your mind. So.
Say no as many times as you want, but I say yes.
So. Anyway. Uh, the assistant living is a conditional use in commercial zone. It's a conditional use, yeah. So that one, just a little bit more history on that. That property is currently zoned industrial, however, it was approved, I mean, zoned commercial if and when it's subdivized. So, um, everything that we're approving is really conditional on subdivision application. Um, but the, yeah, so the assisted living center was previously listed as a conditional use. Well, actually about many, still initially used in commercial zone. Single family was previously listed as a conditional use in commercial zone. So they're, they're vested under that old ordinance. They actually taken off the charter since then. But it's, it's going to be considered under the old ordinance because they submitted their application prior to that.
Fifty industrial.
But it's right now, right. So it, it, the approval will be conditional on, 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 and we, we approve that. Right? That's already done, approved, so. Um, but not federal. Right. So anyway, there's just a few things to make your word of pipeline. Thanks. I think this takes after the snow removal, the last trade storm. Trying to do a good job and then the on some point, Blackman went to Tennessee. So if we have an area that's got a lot of, and cars and stuff, you just put up a, Simon's Antiques. This is the flood area of the town.
Science and say anything.
I got, I'm like, what's going on? Some guys. Thanks, Nathan. Um, everybody said this, but I'm just grateful that our representatives are active and somewhat more reasonable sometimes than, than other areas. So our state representative, yeah, specifically the Gacy. Yeah, I see what other representatives and senators just thrown out there.
I didn't know he was behind the mining thing.
I, I didn't know, you know, uh, there is a, a bit of shortage of, you know, there is, and those kinds of, that are all just selling stuff, right? Uh, I mean, developers and, I mean, I've heard from.
Yeah. I think it's, uh, as much about, uh, Cottonwood Canyon or something. They're trying to expand Geneva, it's trying to expand the mining operations that got shut down by Los Angeles County. Anyway. It, it really does, in my opinion, take away from local authority on land use for mining operations. Anything else, Mike? Uh, Darren?
I just wanted to, excuse me, I hear, but, uh, thanks. After I brought up that issue, um, developers are aware of the sidewalks flooding. But the next day, I grew out it sometimes filled with gravel and it helps alleviate some of the flooding that's happening on that sidewalk. So I was just really appreciative of them getting right on it.
Where's the sidewalk? Yeah. Uh, just want to say thanks. I don't know what we did to a thirty-six fifty, but I know it's a lot of small stones. They were still on the industry. So, it's what I did. It seems to be working because I had an issue with last two stores. And then I just, here in address, I was gonna ask you about the twenty-nine hundred South Street. And then, uh, that was the last, it's the latest one, the original part. I thought we were gonna see that again in this question. Same, oh, sorry, I should have mentioned it. The twenty-nine seven, three, one. Um, we just need more data. We did have a meeting, uh, with, uh, Grant, the gentleman, uh, Minister of Grant, Amy seems to think uh, that reducing the scope get down quite a bit isn't gonna jeopardize the grant. So we're still trying to kind of gather up, firm that up and make sure we've got a good plan and before we're in fact, it just didn't quite have the time to get a plan.
Okay. So, did we talk about meeting with, uh, with WA? We had, not, not as long, they tried to ask, they tried to understand what in the heck was so expensive. So that's in process to get, you need every way to say, well, look, this, this, uh, landscaping stone, sandstone, whatever, this limestone, whatever is way expensive. If you'd be willing to do this. Uh, it, they're trying to come back with ways to reduce the cost without impacting the the, the quality of product.
Changing the.
Thanks, Mark, for that. I feel better than, than well, uh.
My, my, I was like.
These three, we, you, uh, we depend on. Ever nervous, we, we, I'm dead here, it's definitely, okay?
I had a resident ask a question, she mentioned from St. On, in the on one of Nively's Facebook, about waste management and knowing when the holidays are and what the plans are for, for the, I want the holidays to be canceled if they're not canceled or they can lay by a day or they, um, basically her she was hoping the city could get more heads up with waste management, get more heads up with unexpected delays. She has, but the weather can change things. Um, I told her she can go to the website and check things out, but it's not, the others have responded to her little rant on Facebook. There are other residents that appear to appreciate more notice than I know. More notice on holidays.
Waste management, this is their holidays on the website and pretty much their MO is they're gonna be often times a day late for all week. So, but you can't have it on a normal day instead of that, and I can leave it out one more day. And don't call the mayor on Friday night if you're trying to say you picked up your trash on Friday because it'll probably get it's airing. Oh, I, I enjoy those conversations.
I think it'd be useful just to keep running them back to waste management or if the city puts something on there, saving member money with your waste management that's not picked up on holidays and if we're delayed. So I, I just don't know if it's something we wanna try and get ahead of through, just like keep pushing them back towards.
I think we've done some already, Cheryl, but would you talk to Wendy for this one? I think we've had something like that on the website, but it's ridiculous. Sounds like a great plan.
Well, people are still making adjustments to it. They still feel like it's new and, and why, perhaps.
Friday pickup is a problem. What we didn't used to have, because when people don't get their trash picked up on Friday, number one, they can't, they're not supposed to let us or waste management, they were meant to be waste management, now it's New City. They're not supposed to call and say, I didn't get my trash picked up until five P M. in the afternoon. Well, Friday, five P M. in the afternoon, New City staff is not staffing. And then they get in a panic because it's, oh my gosh, this has to go till Monday. I have to do something. I need to report this. I need to report this now. I'm gonna stew on this and I don't blame them for the whole weekend. And by the way, I'm gonna be putting two more days worth of trash, three more days counting Monday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, more trash. And then they're gonna charge me for an overage fee, which I haven't charged anyone yet. But that's, I understand the, the concern and, and part of it is because we're on Friday. I wish Nively City West Side was not on Friday. I wish none of Nively City was on Friday because it introduces the uncertainty of the weekend in the schedule. So we can, we can follow up on all of the schedules.
Yeah, I mean, it would, but, uh, baseball clubs every holiday should have a reminder, government fee, X.
Good, that's our biggest problem. I love problems like this.
The council or the waste management, they've come, because they've, um, stopped one day that they're calling, they're involving them when, and trying to immediately set up a face notification to the entire city. And then they posted on Facebook, we really couldn't think of it forever. And it might be that we need to supply more contact information from our citizens to be used very, very, these types of issues. Because we're also fighting and we're doing dog registrations that we don't have current email. Because that all just shifted to an online system and the citizens aren't giving us anything on the current email.
Don't give your email to them.
Funny thing to note is how they don't, because they're against the earth. And then just, um, Mayor and Aaron and I wrote up a part of this debate in Bridge Lines, um, and I think that's how you try and agree every year, they're government class panel where they the students have an opportunity to ask questions and learn from various elected officials on how the local governments work and those are the things to be involved in. Potential, yeah. Looking for it there. And that's, that's all I have.
Okay, thanks. Uh, another thing I'll add on snowplows is I talked to a UPS driver who did not know I was the mayor and he complimented Nively City relative to other towns on how well Nively City deals with a snowplow. And then I said, I'm the mayor, I'm passing that on to the crew. Said, yeah, please do. So that's good deal. He's a ball of ice to the old snowplow. And that's it. Anything? Thanks all for your work. Thanks for your meeting. Thanks for your passion to serve Nively. And we'll be adjourned.